Good evening. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. It is now 6:37. At this time, I'd like to ask Vice President Darcy Burke to lead our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor Castillo. If everybody would bow their heads. When I reflected on this prayer today, I thought of what a great servant leader Jordan was, and that he demonstrated us how to lead, in not only what he said, but in what he did. So I thought it most appropriate to share the prayer of St. Francis. Lord, make us an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Montgomery, will you please lead the flag salute?
Thank you. And to the heart, please.
Praise the regions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Mayor Potem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Walty.
Here.
Mayor Castillo.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Is there anything to report out of closed session?
Madam Mayor, we have no items to report out of closed session today.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes.
Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve the agenda, please.
Motion.
Second.
Come vote.
Okay, and a roll call vote.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Walty.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Look at all these Hawaiian shirts in the audience tonight honoring our friend Jordan. Thank you so much for your attendance. I'd like to turn this over to our city manager, who will start our program honoring Councilmember Aaron Krantz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a very empty seat at the dais tonight. As we all know, we got some very sad news unexpectedly on May 4th, the passing of Councilmember Aaron Krantz. And I know that Jordan meant so much to this community, probably everyone in this room in different ways. But Jordan meant an awful lot to his city family as well. Speaking on behalf of city staff, Jordan was special. It still really hasn't hit home yet that he's not going to just come walking in just to check up on us a couple times a week and make sure things are on track and check in with us on a personal level. He was just really an important person in the lives of the city staff. And I know that everyone who knew him feels the same way, and I know the council feels the same way. We wanted to just do what we could in our small way to honor him tonight. We have some things we'd like to present to Jenny for him. We have a little video we'd like to show later about Jordan, just some pictures we've collected over the years and some that were provided by Donna Ritchie about Jordan's time on the city council here. State law requires that we move forward within 60 days on an appointment process, so we'll have to do that, of course. But we've put Jordan's picture on the wall here in the council chambers so that for the rest of this year, he will be watching over the actions of this council and I know in a way still guiding us. I know we have a lot of people who want to honor Jordan tonight, so I think we'll move on to that portion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, that is true. We have quite the amount of people who would like to pay their respects to our dear friend. First will be Assemblymember Kelly Ciarto joining us via Zoom, also in conjunction with a representative from Senator Melendez's office for a joint presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, is the echo gone? Good. So first of all, I want to offer my condolences to all of you. You know, I served on the city council for 13 years total, and not once did I have to go through the pain of losing one of my colleagues. You know, it's hard to look over that empty seat. But I know Jordan would tell you, you know, you're going to get through it, and you know, the city is going to march on. But you know, every community needs a good leader or a good leaders. And I think Canyon Lake was really fortunate to have a guy like Jordan on the council and involved in the city for so long. You know, in his early years, I think he was a part-time resident for 25 years, but then he spent the retirement years later, 25 more. And I would say it was a pretty glorious retirement. Dedicating some of that to being retired and then dedicating some of it, the rest of it to helping the city out. And, you know, giving Canyon Lake representation in the region. And then also just showing, I think, mentoring others that are coming onto a council maybe for the first time, and allowing them to take advantage of his experience and all of the knowledge that he has and his leadership qualities. And those leadership qualities will be passed along to others. And, you know, while it is sad that the day has come that Jordan has moved on, I think he leaves a great legacy in Canyon Lake, and it's a legacy of great leadership and leadership that will be carried on by other people. And I think he would be proud. He would be proud of his colleagues. And I think Canyon Lake is a much better place because Jordan was able to help be at the helm. And so, you know, I am, I was shocked to hear when Jordan passed. But at the same time, you know, what a great life and what a way to spend it. In a great community like Canyon Lake with great people, great neighbors, and then going to go visit his family after not seeing them for so long. And that being kind of the final act. So anyway, we're here to honor him. And I'm so grateful that you guys invited me to be here with you this evening to help with that. And we did, I think we have a certificate there, I can't give it to you, from here in Sacramento. We have some late nights this week. But we do have a certificate recognizing Jordan Aaron Krantz for his service to his community and also to the region. And condolences again to his family, his friends, and then all of you, his colleagues on the council. And like I said, I think Jordan would be proud. So I'm honored to get a lot for those few words for him. And I'm anxious to hear some of the other people speak and learn even more about Jordan. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Maddie Vogt. I'm here today on behalf of Senator Melissa Melendez as well as Assemblymember Kelly Ciarto. The Senator sends her condolences. She is also in Sacramento and couldn't be here tonight. But on behalf of the Senator, it's my honor to present you with this in memoriam resolution on behalf of the California State Senate as well as the California Assembly. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, I believe we have from Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, Vice President Darcy Burke.
I'm not going to take a ton of time. I just wanted to say that on behalf of our entire board, not only were we surprised, but we were deeply saddened. And all of my fellow board members had such wonderful, kind things to say about Jordan that just made me feel good of where I come from. He was always so gracious and professional and his positivity, no matter what the problem, that we could pull our bootstraps up and get it done just makes us all remember him fondly. And we have the deepest condolences for you and your family. Please know that if there's anything that I can do to make this better, I'm right around the corner from you, and I think that goes for everybody here. One of the things that I think that tasks all of you is although you'll be filling a vacancy, you'll never fill the void that Jordan leaves for us. So please know that he's forever in our hearts and we will miss him forever. Thank you.
Thank you so much. From the Western Riverside Council of Governments, we have Acting Executive Director Chris Gray.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm the interim Executive Director, Chris Gray, of the Western Riverside Council of Governments. For those of you who aren't aware of this, one of the duties that's asked of your city council is to serve on regional boards. Some of you may serve on RCTC, RTA. But one of the duties Jordan had for a very long time was serving on the Western Riverside Council of Governments. And in my capacity, in some various jobs I had at Deveraux Cog, I had the opportunity to get to know Jordan over the last five years. And this is an unfortunate duty that I have, but it's a responsibility I have to recognize people who passed. I was in Eastville last week for Ic Boozmas, and I would just encourage all of our elected officials to please take care of yourselves. I don't like doing this. But I will say with Jordan, the one word that everyone at Deveraux Cog, when you asked about Jordan, was it was kindness. There was always a kind word from him. He always said hi. He always asked how you were doing, and there was a genuine warmth to him. We were shocked by his passing. We will truly miss him. I know the board members will miss him. The staff will miss him. We have a proclamation signed by our chairman that I'd like to present. And we will miss Jordan dearly, and we are sad to see him go. And with that, I want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next to present is Lieutenant James Rails from the Riverside County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm on behalf of Sheriff Chad Bianco and Sheriff's Administration and Sheriff's Department as a whole. We're sorry for your loss, the council, for the city. You lost your partner. Aaron, he was, Jordan Aaron Krantz was a great guy. We had many conversations. People probably don't know it, but we talked. Even though I've been here a short time, he was always positive, always had something positive to say about the Sheriff's Department. We were going through all these hard times lately, and he was always real supportive. Hey, we support you guys. The community supports you. Keep up the good work. And he will definitely be missed by all. So on behalf of Sheriff Chad Bianco, he has a sheriff's commendation here for him. So I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you so much. Next to present from the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association is Board President Joe Komison.
Thank you, council, for this opportunity to share the association, the Property Owners Association, concerns about the loss of an icon in our community. And I'd like to just, I have to write these down because I don't want to miss. They've made such an impact in our community. Jordan was an incredibly dedicated community servant for nearly 20 years. His love for the community was boundless and admirable. Jordan walked the walk to contribute to our community. He served on the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association Board of Directors from 2004 to 2008, serving three years as Board President. He was a great Board President who led with passion to make Canyon Lake the best it could be. Jordan was very vested in his role on the Canyon Lake POA Board. He was a peacemaker in times of turmoil, and he always looked for ways to keep the community united. Jordan also was a member of the Facility Planning Committee. Like his time on the board, his positive and cheerful demeanor was incredibly valuable, and he was often the voice of reason on the committee. Jordan was very active in the community. He belonged to several clubs, and I don't know anyone who has attended more Canyon Lake events than Jordan. His kind and calm demeanor will forever be missed and never forgotten. He will forever be a Canyon Lake legend. And those are the words from the community members in Canyon Lake. And Jenny, we have this plaque in honoring of Jordan, and I'd like to read it if that's okay. Jordan's love for the community Canyon Lake was boundless. He was the ultimate goodwill ambassador, servant, and local icon. He led with his heart and cared genuinely for the well-being of the community. In addition to the decades he spent serving the Canyon Lake community through various clubs, committees, volunteerism, and as a public servant. He also served on the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association from 2004 to 2008 and served as Board President for three years. He was invaluable member of our community and the longest-serving council member in the history of the city. We honor and cherish his memory. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Over the last several weeks, we have received so much love from all over the region. We have definitely felt the love from the surrounding cities, from the agencies. So for all of those who have reached out to us and have kept the Aaron Krantz family and the city of Canyon Lake in prayer, I'd like to say thank you. We've received flowers, cards, and multiple agencies have adjourned their meetings in honor of Jordan. I would like to say a special thank you to the following agencies who very thoughtfully sent proclamations or certificates honoring Jordan. County Supervisor Kevin Jeffries, the city of Menifee, the city of Corona, the city of Eastville, the city of Paris, and the Riverside Transit Agency. We also received flowers today from CRNR, from the city of Menifee, and from the city of Paris. We'd also like to present this to you. This is on behalf of Congressman Ken Calvert, and it says, "This is to certify that the accompanying flag was flown over the United States Capitol on May 21st, 2021. At the request of the Honorable Ken Calvert, Member of Congress, this flag was flown in memory of Canyon Lake Councilmember Jordan Aaron Krantz." So on behalf of council and staff, we have a few items that we'd like to present to you, Jenny. The first is a shadow box of mementos that we've gathered that remind us of Jordan. We have his shirt that always had his name embroidered on it with the logo. I can't remember too many times when I haven't seen Jordan in Canyon Lake here because he was so proud of being part of the city staff. We have a brochure from Vector Control. A mosquito brochure, to be clear. Because all of us will miss being so thoroughly educated about the mosquitoes here, in Africa, and everywhere else. We have his Jordan Aaron Krantz mayor name tag. And then we have, it's going to be hard. Sorry. When I was appointed mayor, he gave me the note that you see in the shadow box. And Jordan was not just a friend and a colleague, but a mentor to me. And two pieces of advice that he gave me, both with happy faces underneath. The first says, "It's better to remain silent and be thought of as a fool than to speak out and remove all doubt." I'm still working on this. The second one is, "Speak when you are angry, and you will give the best speech you will ever regret." Also, still working on that. I treasured that and I kept it. I think it's perfect in the shadow box for you and your family. The next item that we have for you is a plaque. It reads, "We will forever miss our dear friend and colleague Jordan. His dedication and commitment to the city of Canyon Lake was unsurpassed. His impact on this community will never be forgotten." And then it gives the dates of council member 2008 to 2021, mayor 2012, 2015, 2019, and 2020. And then finally, we have a city of Canyon Lake street sign for you. Jordan Aaron Krantz Way. And I know now Chris wants to give some of our final presentation, and then I know all the members of council also have some comments as well.
Yeah, one last thing that the city would like to do on an ongoing perpetual basis to honor Jordan. Jordan really was Mr. Canyon Lake. I can't think of anyone who loved the community more or was more involved or more generous of his time and resources to this community over so many years than Jordan. And so, we'd like to announce tonight the establishment of the Jordan Aaron Krantz Spirit of Canyon Lake Award. This will be a perpetual award, perpetual plaque that will hang in City Hall forever. Every year, one recipient will be awarded. Their name will be put on this plaque. It'll be someone who embodies that community spirit over the course of that year, who gives selflessly of themselves, of their time and resources to the betterment of the community like Jordan did. And that person will be given an award that looks like this to take home. Says the Jordan Aaron Krantz Spirit of Canyon Lake Award. We'll have their name engraved, and this will be presented to them every year at the State of the City event. And so, this is something we thought we could do to remember Jordan forever, every year here at City Hall.
Thank you. I know all the, my colleagues would like to say a couple words, but, and I'll be brief since I just made that presentation, but I truly miss his words of encouragement. He was definitely a mentor for me, someone that I looked to stay level-headed, remain reasonable, and be thoughtful in action. Those are things that I learned from Jordan. I also learned that smiling at everyone goes a long way. And I cannot remember an instance when I did not see him smiling, even if he may not have felt that inside. One of my favorite memories of Jordan will be seeing him work Oktoberfest and the various chamber events, passing out cotton candy and water bottles. Like everyone mentioned, there just really was an event that he didn't participate in. And I will always treasure him as a member of the Veterans Day Committee with me. And another favorite memory I have is him and yourself leading the parade last year. That was a lot of fun, and that was a great day. I'm really going to miss him, not only as a colleague, but as a friend. And I just love you guys so much. Would you like to add something?
I can't say enough of your loss, Jenny, because it's a loss for us too. Jordan, many years ago, asked me, "Why don't you get on council?" I said, "Do you think I'm crazy? I see what goes on in there. I don't want to do that." And when we were in our period, we didn't have Chris as our city manager, I was working with Mike as the interim. And he goes, "Hey, you want to be city manager?" I said, "Do you think I'm crazy?" And Jordan's, one of his favorite things he would say when we would have some tough times, "Can't we all just get along?" And I think that sums up the words of Jordan. He'd be truly missed. I can't imagine for your family. But God bless you and your family. And I hope these small little things will carry his memory forward because they are with us.
Dale.
I'd just like to say, Jenny, what a light you've always been in my life. I'm just glad you're still here. I know it's going to be rough, but we'll be here for you. Like Casey, I still have a lot to learn from Jordan. My memories of him keeping me calm and staying out of the storm, it's very precious. And I can't thank you both enough for that. So thank you.
Mayor Potem Smith could not be here with us tonight, but he did record a video message for you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out in support of Jordan. Tonight's a very difficult night for all of us, but I want tonight to be more focused on the thought of being thankful. Simply because Jordan has given so much to the community, and we are blessed and thankful for all that he's given. Also, I want to give a special thanks to you, Jenny, and family because you've allowed Jordan to give so many hours and time to this community, and we've all benefited from that. The last couple of years on council has been amazing for me, having a mentor like Jordan. And I have so much more to give because of what he taught me. And I'm so appreciative and I'm thankful for that. As a community as a whole, Jordan as an institution itself, and he's the definition of Canyon Lake, always had a smile, truly cared about those around him, wanted to do great things for this community. And every now and then, I love the historical line shirt, which is why you see most of us wearing one this evening. It is so important that we remember all the good that he has done, and we continue to move forward as a community, but also as a council. We put in place some of the big items that Jordan wanted. And I know for me, I'm motivated to see things through because it's what he would want. I'm blessed to be a friend. I'm blessed to be able to be a part of everything that he's given. But I want tonight to be a thankful night, a night where we get to look back and say, "Jordan, thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done." And we are so blessed to be a part of that.
And we also have a short video made by staff honoring our dear friend Jordan. And we also have a short video made by staff honoring our dear friend, Jordan. Okay.
I would say pretty much all of our city staff are close to Jordan. He was just that kind of a guy that just warmed everybody.
He always felt like he was on your side, no matter who it was, he always was on your side.
That's true.
He never got worried about anybody.
Yeah.
I mean, not, not only he's talking with city council, but when you see him out.
Yeah, that's true.
A smile and...
Except for when he was talking about vector control.
Right, 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 right.
All right, are you ready, Hannah? Okay. All right, everyone, we are going to reconvene our meeting. It is now seven eleven, I'm sorry, seven seventeen. Okay. Jordan would want us to get it together, move along. So, we're going to go on to community reports. We do have a long meeting tonight, so I'm going to ask that those who are providing community reports, keep them to three minutes each. Hannah, if you would do me a favor and just kind of give a 30-second warning. I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay. First, we have Darcy Burke.
Mayor Castillo, city council, city staff, yes? So, I wanted to just congratulate the city on a great Memorial Day event. It was lovely, short, and, and very well done, so thank you. But that means summer's here and we've kind of kicked it off and the weather is warmer. So, please, please check your sprinklers for leaks or runoff. The more we can do to be more efficient, the less likely we'll be have to, in a, in a drought and have to take draconian measures. I also wanted to report, and this will make some people happy, and it will not make other people happy, that the Canyon Lake Water Treatment Plant will remain offline until 2025. So, we'll start the pilot testing next month, and that will be a water quality pilot testing, both for the PFOS family as well as for Sinotoxins or what you would known as toxic algae. So, those things will be online, you'll see regular operations, but the plant will be offline, so the water level will remain high. We will be having our rate hearing for both water and sewer rates on June 24th via Zoom at 6:00 PM. If you visit our website, evwd.com, you will be able to access that information and participate. I would also like to remind people that if they have questions, I'm available to answer them before the hearing. You can also send a protest letter if there's a problem. And if you're having trouble paying your bill, we have a rare program that will help you. And we are actually making adjustments to that to go along with the rates. So, more money will be available to those that are on the program. I think that's pretty much it. I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Again, I'm always available if the council has questions or residents have questions. My phone number is always available, my email. I'm happy to take any questions the council may have.
Any questions for Darcy? I know that we've heard from her quite a few times about the upcoming rate increase as a result of the energy increases.
Many things, yes.
Right.
Is there alum treatment scheduled?
Actually, that would be a leisure question and I'm not, I'm not quite sure if, if there's one planned in the near future.
Seems like we've got a lot of algae in the lake in certain spots.
I know that that's a POA testing question. They actually sample for the algae. So, I'm sure we can get that information back to your city manager.
Okay. Dale, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Jeremy, any questions? No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Joe Commation was here.
President Commation doesn't have any updates from the POA tonight.
Okay. Chamber of Commerce update, Jeannie O'Dow.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. First of all, Jenny, I just want to let you know that on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we certainly appreciate and are forever grateful for all, all of the support from you and Jordan. Jordan was definitely one of our biggest cheerleaders. And like Casey mentioned, one of my absolute favorite memories is when we worked Oktoberfest and we would pop popcorn, well, okay, maybe sometimes burn popcorn together. So, that was always an enjoyable time. And as we've talked, we know that Marty and Jordan are out there somewhere having their coffee, solving the problems of the world. So, we'll hold those memories strong. So, on to chamber business. The chamber is sponsoring Restaurant Week, June 4th through June 11th. What that is, is all seven of our restaurants here in Canyon Lake will be participating. There will be table toppers in the restaurants that you will scan a QR code and be entered into a drawing to win a gift card. We also have another event on June 15th that's being hosted by the chamber. We have a speaker, Maria Diaz of Level Up Human Resources, and she will be presenting Understanding Emotional Intelligence. So, that's on June 15th. We'll be hosting it over here in the CCS Executive Suite Conference Room. Light refreshments will be served. And please go to our website and check all of our events. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Just to comment, Jeannie, June 4th seems a million miles away, but the reality is it's Friday, starting Friday, the, the restaurant event is going on.
And all seven of our restaurants are participating, hence the name Seven Days to Save.
Thanks.
So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. On to public safety update. Hi, Lieutenant Reals, welcome back.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members and staff. I have the public safety report for June, which covers the month of May. During the month of May, deputies responded to 422 calls for service, which is up 31 from 391. During the month of May, there were 12 Part 1 crimes. We had four aggravated assaults, four burglaries, three thefts, and one motor vehicle theft. In addition, we made one public intoxication arrest, wrote three traffic citations, made two DUI arrests, investigated four traffic collision investigations, and overall, 15 arrests were made in the city of Canyon Lake. Eight were for outstanding warrants. And I gave a three-month comparison below. But nothing that really stands out for this month. And I also put our Priority 1 through Priority 4 response times, just in case you want to take a look at those. And the ones that we really focus on are our Priority 1 calls. Priority 1 calls are our top priority to where there's a threat to life. And normally deputies are responding with a code response with lights and sirens, all the way down to a Priority 4, which is past calls, past reports that need to be made. So, so far in 2021, seven minutes and 20 seconds for the Priority 1 response. It was six minutes, nine seconds this past month. Priority 2 is 20 minutes and 64 seconds. Priority 3 is 42 minutes and 51 seconds. And then our lowest priority goes down to, it goes to 53 and 89 seconds. Can you just see it? From year to year, it's usually about the same. We're down a little bit on every priority, just a little bit this year. But as it starts opening back up, we're probably going to even back out. But nothing blaring to stand out. Does she have any questions?
Thank you for preparing this. I appreciate it. It's nice to be able to see this kind of data.
And I can add some different sheets as we go along, just different things that you might be interested in.
Okay. I know that we had, in the Finance Committee, discussed the different invoices that we received as a result of increased activity based on some of the events that have happened here, so.
Only takes one incident and then that's it.
That's right. So, but it's, it's good to be able to understand the billing as well. Do you have any questions? Questions?
This is coming. I check on the parks fairly often. My, my kid plays in the parks. Occasionally, we have moments in the parks where it's not so good, but overall, when, when I go through the parks, you guys look like you're doing a good job. The summer seems to be staying under control. I just want to encourage you and the, and the Community Patrol to work together to continue keeping the, the level of mischief, so to speak, at the parks down. As of now, I think you're doing a good job. We just obviously want to make sure we stay that way.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And I want to thank all the citizens of Canyon Lake for a great Memorial Weekend. Our deputies were out there all weekend and there were no major incidents. We made no arrests. Everything was great, so it was, it was a good weekend.
Thank you so much. Okay. Did we get any stats from CAL FIRE?
We did not.
Do, did they send someone or are they on the phone?
Fortunately, we have not heard from CAL FIRE, so I don't have statistics for the council, nor did I hear from them in regards to somebody being here tonight.
Okay. Code enforcement. Ruby?
Good evening, council. So, I'm going to go straight down to BLM. Over the Memorial Weekend, obviously, we had a really high activity with motorized vehicles. We are seeing a higher increase now that the summer is hitting, not just on the weekends, but also during the week. So, we're going to start patrolling there Monday through Thursday a little bit more often than usual. We've also been seeing an increase on illegal dumping. Fortunately, we've been able to clean that up and take care of it ourselves. And then down to short-term rentals, as you know, a couple of months ago, we had 25 that we knew of. We are down to five now, so they pretty much all have came into compliance.
That's really great news.
And, oh, I'm sorry. For our residential rental registrations, we've had 20 notices that have gone out, and 10 have complied so far. And that's all I have.
Ruby, on the weekends for the BLM, which is a high activity, we have somebody out there on patrol?
We do. So, we have our Weekend Officer, and also BLM Rangers are out there.
Okay. What's their hours?
I don't know BLM. They vary. Our Code Enforcement Officers are from 6:00 AM till about maybe 1:00 or 2:00.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Dale?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Okay. Moving on to public comment, again, this will be limited to three minutes. We do have a long calendar. We're going to be in strict compliance with this tonight. Madam City Clerk, can you please read the public comment statement?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a Speaker Request Form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the City Clerk prior to an individual being heard by the City Council. The City Council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. Please note that if you're addressing the City Council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the City Council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. Members of the public who are joining us virtually are asked to submit their comment electronically by sending an email to publiccomment@canyonlakeca.gov. I will continue to accept email comments during this meeting in real time. Electronically submitted comments should be no more than 250 words and include the person's name and agenda item number. All comments received on a specific agenda item will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. We have several comments tonight. We are going to start comments with our email comments, and this one is going to be from Barbara Lebold. I believe that's how you pronounce her last name. And the subject is Consent Item Number Four: Comments Submitted by Lake Elsinore City Attorney. Mayor Castillo and members of the City Council, I am writing to you this evening regarding Item Number Four on the city's consent agenda concerning the proposed North Gate Park conceptual plan and direction to the city manager to move forward with planning, design, and land acquisition. I serve as the city attorney for the city of Lake Elsinore. Because the proposed park site lies within the municipal boundaries of the city of Lake Elsinore, the city of Lake Elsinore is naturally concerned about the proposed land uses that are inconsistent with the city's general plan, and by extension disenfranchise the city of Lake Elsinore of its normal land use authority. Notably, Lake Elsinore has not been accorded the courtesy of any outreach or other contact about this proposal from Canyon Lake staff. While we have had little time to investigate the proposed project, there are two issues that raise initial concerns. First, the resolution before the council tonight concludes that the adoption of the resolution is exempt from CEQA. While the resolution purports to authorize the city manager to initiate the acquisition process, Canyon Lake's closed-session agenda reveals that real property negotiations are already ongoing. The city of Lake Elsinore is very concerned about the potential impacts of this project, and so we urge Canyon Lake to thoroughly address the project's potential environmental impacts by conferring with resource agencies and holding a public scoping meeting as soon as practicable. Our second initial concern goes to the proposed proprietary operation of an RV storage facility on the site. Where the proposed park within Canyon Lake, the city of Lake Elsinore would certainly defer to the judgment of the Canyon Lake City Council in determining the sorts of proprietary operations that are consistent with park uses. However, in entering into the city of Lake Elsinore to conduct a proprietary operation, the city of Lake Elsinore has reservations about that component of the proposal. In closing, we requested that the Canyon Lake City Council direct its staff to reach out to Lake Elsinore City Manager Jason Simpson to discuss our concerns in greater detail. Thank you for this opportunity to address the City Council. Barbara Lebold, City Attorney, City of Lake Elsinore. And we're gonna move on to John Zites.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, guess who didn't get the Hawaiian shirt memo? I'm requesting that you pull Item Four from the consent agenda. I don't know when consent agendas have been changed. Consent agendas were for items of minor nature that didn't require any discussion, and I can't see how this could be placed on the consent agenda in the first place without any discussion. Robert Lebold, the city manager, city attorney for the city of Lake Elsinore, has a similar concern, but we don't even have a chance to talk about it unless you pull it. So, please pull it, so we can talk.
Next, we're gonna move on to Jack Wamsley.
Kind of on the lighter side, Jordan and I were very, very good friends, and we'd done a lot of talking about different things and so on. We're the only two council members that ever served on the POA Board and the City Council at the same time. We used to laugh about that. Boy, I'll never do that again. And I really enjoyed being with him. One of the things that happened, unfortunately, just a few hours before he passed away, I was talking to him on the phone in Florida, and I really was shocked when I heard that he had passed away. The other thing that we did every month, he was a member of our OFL Club, and that, once a month, that happens to stand for OFL's Lunch. And we have about six of us, and we get together every month, and we solve all the problems in the world. Larry Green is one of our members. And it usually lasts about two, three hours, and we really missed, missed Jordan's participation. I always thought he was a great guy, and it's just sad to see him go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cody Wright?
Good afternoon. Cody Wright here. I just had a couple of questions looking over the budget here with the EMS subscription fee. I see it's proposed for $750,000.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Are you, are you speaking on the item regarding the fee setting for the EMS?
Yes.
Okay, that, we need to take that at the time of the EMS public hearing, then.
Okay, when is that?
It's tonight. It's just in a different order.
Okay. I think, and then what about the fire-related questions?
The Fire Department is on the agenda also.
Okay.
So, we'll call you back up for each one.
Perfect, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so we have several other cards. It appears that they are non-agenda-related items, but I'm, I'm assuming that there are some fire comments. So, did you want me to take those at the discussion for the fire update? We can take those at that time, or we can just take them?
Do the speaker cards indicate the topic?
They don't. It just says, "Public Comment, Non-Agenda Related Item."
We should probably call each speaker and ask them, you know, if they, if it's fire-related, we'll need to move them, but we should, we should ask.
Okay. Tyler Murdaugh. Fire-related, thank you. Michael Zimmerman. Fire-related, okay. And we have two email comments, also fire-related, and we have two additional cards from Mr. Zites, which are for Item Eight, so we can move on to those at a later time.
Is that the rest of the non-agendas?
Correct. That concludes the public comments.
Okay. Okay. Consent Calendar. Will you please read the Consent Calendar Statement?
Thank you. All items listed on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous City Council action. The items listed on the Consent Calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the City Council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items. Before you move on to the Consent Calendar, I just would like to note that Mayor Protem Smith is on the phone. He's joining this meeting via phone call, and so all votes will be by roll call tonight.
Okay. Does, sorry. Any council member wish to pull a Consent Calendar item? No? No. Jeremy? Any wish to pull a Consent Calendar item?
Can I make the motion to move forward?
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith? Mayor Protem, thank you. Councilmember Welty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Okay. Now, we are moving on to the public hearing. This is on the EMS issue, as well as solid waste collection rates. Okay. Let me get my trusty gavel over here. Okay. I am opening the public hearing at 7:39, and we have, I believe, a staff presentation.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Before you, it was Resolution Number 2021-28, Establishing Solid Waste Collection Rates and EMS Program Fees for the 2021-2022 Fiscal Year. On April 8 of this year, the city received correspondence from its contract solid waste taller, CRNR Incorporated, requesting increases in the various rates charged for their services. Our view of the change in annual data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics for calendar year 2020 revealed an increase in CPI for all urban consumers of 1.87%. In addition, the County of Riverside's Waste Management Department has indicated that they will increase their disposal rate by 2.25%. Therefore, CRNR is requesting a new rate schedule which passes these adjustments through to the various rates. The bottom line for residents is it would amount to a monthly increase of 61 cents per month for residential standard service. Alex Brekovich with CRNR is in the audience, should the council have any questions on that. On the EMS program fee side, the city conducted a fee analysis in March of 2020 to determine the cost of providing EMS on a per-call basis. Additionally, the city calculated an EMS subscription fee at a flat monthly rate per resident or business that voluntarily participates. On June 3 of 2020, the City Council set the EMS fee for a full-cost recovery at a per-call rate of $1,483, and the EMS subscription fee at a flat monthly rate of $16. No changes to these fee amounts are being proposed for fiscal year 2021-2022. Depending on participation levels and cost fluctuations, it is anticipated that these fees may be revised in the future. The ordinance which established the EMS program does reference the fact that these fees may be recalculated from time to time. It is not necessary for the ordinance to do it every single year. We did look at that, and frankly, came to the conclusion that should a recalculation be done for this coming fiscal year, that the fees would no doubt increase based on the fact that the city is about to spend a significant amount of money on startup of a Fire Department, and a lot of those costs are related to the provision of EMS, the supplies and materials that are needed to provide that. So, the decision was made to forego recalculation this year. We get our Fire Department up and running, stabilize the costs, and we could better forecast into the future for those. And that concludes staff presentation on this item.
Any questions by staff? Or I'm sorry, by Council?
I have one question. It's for CNRNR. Is it, is that a combined CPI, Alex, and, and the increase in management waste? Did you just combine those two numbers for the fee raise?
Yeah, that's a combination of the county increases and our CPI increases.
Okay. So, that's, that's how we come up to the 32.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I had a question. In receiving your correspondence, it indicated that, given SB 1383, we're not receiving additional costs now, but in the future, as in next year, we should expect more significant rate increases?
Yes. Unfortunately, the state of California passed Senate Bill 1383 back in 2016. The regulatory package was just recently passed in December of 2020. Those regulations are impacting every city in the state of California. Can I take this off?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Those regulations are impacting everybody in the state of California. They are changing the solid waste industry significantly. There are a number of additional requirements that the city of Canyon Lake will have to put in place in order to be in compliance with 1383. If you are not in compliance with 1383, the state has the unfortunate opportunity to fine the city up to $10,000 a day. So, there are a, matter of fact, I have a checklist with me tonight that I could leave with you, but there are a number of requirements that each city has to put in place. Everything from new auditing procedures, new reporting, edible food requirements, there, there's just a litany list of issues that, that we have to put in place. And so, these are all new, which will require new resources as well. We didn't want to put any sort of increase through this year because, quite honestly, we don't know what it's gonna cost yet. We're doing those calculations as we speak. So, we should have a better idea by the end of this year going into next year.
Okay. So, if I understand you correctly, we're doing a small CPI increase now, but our rate payers, our residents, can expect significant increases the next year?
Well, we're hoping that it's not significant, because the city of Canyon Lake made the bold move a few years ago of already signing up for the anaerobic digester. So, that's a big part of the component. What is left are things like, we have to hire a team of folks to go out and do audits, street audits. We have to make sure containers are properly labeled, that they're the right colors, all these kind of things. So, I don't want to bore you to tears with everything in here, but there's a lot in here, and we're hoping to keep the cost to a minimum.
Okay.
This is a change to your business, your professional in this business you've been doing a long time. You're kind of coming to us and saying, you know, we see what they wrote, we're not sure how it's gonna all apply or work, and the reality is, our staff doesn't have your level of professionalism. So, the question is, is how does our staff develop the skill set and the expertise to be able to apply this? And I'm, I'm kind of hoping you're gonna kind of say, yes, we are gonna have classes, we are gonna help train your staff, we are gonna guide the staff to places where they can get the training. Because my feeling now is there's no training today, because you guys, not you, but as an organization or as a system, you really haven't put together the specifics enough to really make our people really good at what they're supposed to be doing. What, what can you provide for assistance, I guess, or where can you direct the staff?
Just so I understand the question, when, when you say "our people," are you meaning our, your staff?
No, I'm talking about our staff. I, I mean, our, where does our staff get the training to be able to apply it?
Right.
Bottom of the question.
Right.
The second line is, I'm kind of hoping you can assist them in that.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm looking to use the professional. I'm going, you know what? This is all new to you, but it's all way new to these, our group, and we really appreciate any help.
Absolutely.
Because training is really a cost that needs in the end.
Right.
If we all make mistakes and do things poorly, then there's gonna be extensive consequences, so.
Well, that training, that training has already begun. We've been working with Mike, we've been working with your city manager, and making sure that everything that needs to be done to this point is done. Moving forward, we'll be working very closely with your staff to make sure that all those boxes are checked, and that the city of Canyon Lake is not out of compliance with the state requirements. But we've also just hired a, a brand-new regulatory compliance manager that will be working directly with your staff to make sure that everything that needs to be done for 1383 is done as well.
Appreciate that.
Anytime, absolutely.
Okay, those were questions on the solid waste collection rates. Any other questions? Comments?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Jeremy?
Hey, just wanna give a shout out. You know, Alex, I know how hard you've been working on this. This is, uh, this thing has been a nightmare, and the state has made it very difficult for you guys to continue to move forward, and I just want to say thank you. And I just want to say thank you for the hard work, dedication that you've given to Canyon Lake, informing Mike and Chris of the entire process. You're a professional on your end, so I just want to say thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, as to the EMS, I do have a question on that. So last year, we set the rates. This year, you indicate that we are not adjusting the rates because honestly, we think that they would probably go up if that's the case. You mentioned that some of those costs, based on the fire department startup, are EMS costs. Could you kind of give me an idea of what you're referring to? I think you mentioned some equipment, but I just kind of want a little bit of an idea.
Sure, sure. The EMS program is designed to be cost recovery for providing EMS services. And we know that on any given year, approximately 80% of the calls for service for the fire department are EMS calls. And so, when we originally did the calculation, we looked at what our total costs were, the percentage of that which is for EMS. Those costs are very clear. They're given to us by the county. We know how many calls we get in a year, we know what percentage of those are for fighting fires or for EMS calls and all the different categories. So the calculation is really quite, quite simple. And so, if our costs in a given year go up significantly, which they will next year as we start this fire department, then it stands to reason that the percentage of those costs that are the dollar amount, you know, if the percentage stays about the same at that 80%, the dollar amount will be higher if the total cost is higher.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
I think it does. I just, you know, essentially, we could transfer some costs for cost recovery, but we will reassess when we actually have hard and fast numbers.
Correct.
Okay. Dale, do you have any questions? Larry? Jeremy? Any questions on the EMS to staff?
Nope.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
Okay. At this time, we take testimony by proponent. Are we taking them at the same time for both issues? Okay. Testimony both on the collection rates for solid waste as well as EMS program fees.
So I have John Zites.
All right, so this is for proponent?
Yes, I have a pro card and a con card for Mr. Zites.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to do proponent and see if there's anyone else who's a proponent, and then I'll call you back for oponent if that's all right.
Perfect, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just have a comment here. I asked the city for a lot of information. As the city attorney knows, it's taken seven months to get me all the information that I've asked for. But recently, I asked for some additional information, and I thank you for all of that. About the money that's been collected, the $192, how many $192 have you collected? I know, Madam Mayor, I know from the documents that they gave me that you asked for these statistics, but they didn't give them to you. Even though it's good to ask, maybe you don't get them. But that, how many $192 have you gotten? And I got this information, and I think it's very interesting, that you received a check for $1,344,961.50. And I can give you a copy of this if you'd like, Madam Mayor. This includes Canyon Lake refuse, EMS, and UUT charges. Now, the thing that I think is very interesting is, that's a lump sum. You don't know how many $192s are in there, so how do you know how much of that to take out for that? And I look at, I look at the fees that are charged, and I don't see any UUT amounts in here, which is appropriate. When I get a water bill, it's my water bill, and then it's the UUT charge. But the other part of that is that when I got my tax bill, there's nothing in here that says "UUT charge." So if you're getting UUT money, where is that coming from? So my comment is that I don't know what the hell is going on. You may know. And I'll leave this for you. You have a copy, but I'll give it to you. And my suggestion for you, Alex, is that if I was you, I'd require an audit of these times. If the city can't tell me, how many is that? How can they tell how to break that down? That's my problem for them.
Okay. Any other testimony by proponent?
That is the only pro card that I have. That's the only pro card.
Thank you. All right. Testimony by oponent. EMS or solid waste?
John Zites.
And this is the con. I hope, I hope I can get through this. I've got 11 pages of documents to go through. I am amazed that the city did what they did last year. You know, if I was in elementary school and I copied a document and plagiarized something, I wouldn't get a good grade for it, but it passes here. Let's take Norco and let's do everything exactly what they said. So it's an exact document. Luckily, they took out the word "Norco" and put in "Canyon Lake." But as the city manager just said, this is a recovery of certain costs incurred, and you should all have a copy of this. Okay, I'm sorry. There's copies of this so you can follow along with me. When I refer to a certain page, you all can have copies. And there's some on the floor over there for anybody who wants one here. So on the front page, recovery of certain costs incurred in responding to calls for emergency medical services is essential to the continued provisions of the emergency medical services with a modern, professional, and first-class public safety operation. On the next page, you have Exhibit A from the fire department. Exhibit A from the fire department shows that you have $2,214,000 in fire costs. I understand that the City of Canyon Lake, and when I served on the council, we had to have a fire department. We didn't have to have paramedics, we had to have a fire department. These are your fixed costs for what you are required to have. It's your fire department. This does include paramedics. So if you want to take the cost of the paramedics and the fixed fire department costs that you have, then take the cost out. CAL FIRE tells me that's $200,000. Okay, on the next page?
$200,000, you're saying salary costs?
Right. If you take out, you see here FF2 medics, $647,000 for two. You're still going to have to have a staff if they're not paramedics. So the reduced cost is $200,000. And let me go to the next page. This is from the document that these people gave you, that I don't know that you ever read it or you even saw it. The public didn't see it. A fee is a payment made by an individual for a service provided by a jurisdiction that primarily benefits that individual. I live in the East Bay. I do not get any benefit from paying these fees. I am serviced by Station 5. As you talked about, 80% of the calls in Canyon Lake are for paramedics. 55% of those calls are handled by Station 5 and 94 outside of Canyon Lake.
You have 30 seconds. 30 seconds.
For five minutes?
No, you have three minutes. You have 30 seconds left.
Mr. Zites, if you need additional time, you can certainly ask the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, I want to go through this whole thing. We didn't get to do this last year. We need to get to do it this year. And I'm the only speaker, so why not give me the time?
I don't think you are the only speaker. Is he the only speaker?
I need to just check with Mr. Timothy Adams if he's a proponent, or did you want to speak on EMS or just the fire? Just fire?
Okay. So we're good.
Okay. He's the only speaker.
Okay. Mr. Zites, I will compromise with you. How much time do you want?
How much do I want?
Yes, how much time do you want?
I want to go through this whole document.
Okay, well.
But I'll go, I'm trying to go as fast as I can.
And I understand, and I'm going to give you extra time.
Give me five more minutes.
Okay.
And I'll zip through this.
Here's, here's what we're going to do. I'm going to absolutely give you extra time because I want to hear what you have to say, and I'm taking notes on what you have to say.
You have it right there.
And I appreciate you bringing this, okay? As long as you can do the condensed version as opposed to the verbatim, we're on the same page.
Okay. I will go to the, go to the next page.
Okay, just so I know, what page are you on?
It's two on the bottom. Introduction. According to law, fees may not exceed reasonable costs for providing the services which are collected unless the excess is approved by two-thirds of the people. All right. Wait a minute, I need to go back. And it says in here that the data that you used to do this must be made available to the public. And I'll get back to that, okay? So I am requesting the data. I do not accept what you just accepted, that, what you just had, okay? Moving on. This is a document now, cost recovery continued. This is what you were given if you ever read it.
Again, what page are you on now?
Page nine on the bottom.
Okay, because I go, it goes two, then 10, then nine?
Well, it should be two, nine. Goes to nine.
Mine goes to 10.
Cost recovery account, right there, that one. Cost recovery on the top. Cost recovery continued.
I think maybe my packet's just out of order. That's all right. Proceed. Go ahead.
Okay, you found it?
Yeah, I do, thanks.
Okay, this is what you had last year. So if you take the medical, fire and medical budget, which is $2,248, that's your total medical budget. That's your fire department budget. That's not your recovery cost for paramedics, that's your fire cost. And then the amount of medical fees are the cost that you could get from the fire tax income. Okay. Now, this doesn't say anything about UUTs. In the beginning, you talk about revenue. That the company's going to say they can look at revenue, then you get into things that's dedicated revenue. But on the next page, I did cost recovery, continue. Okay? I did that. I took your form that you got and took the amount of money that's in your budget. That's why I said I want your data, and I wouldn't accept the data. You take your budget, and you look at the $1,002 that's coming in from the, and that's three pages down. A million, $1,041,000, and then 63,294,000. Capital outlay, 735,000. That's two pages down.
I'm, okay, two pages down, I just, it's not.
It's in your budget. Okay, I'm just taking your budget for this year.
I'm just trying to follow along. Are you on a specific page?
Okay, it's, it's, it's your.
Okay, is that, are you attached, is this?
Just two pages down from there.
Are you looking at page 278?
79, next page.
79, okay.
These are the fire outlays that you have. You've got $1,004,000, and then your city fire department is $663,000 and $294,000. Now, you've got a capital outlay of 735,000. That shouldn't be included in your cost, and that's not in the preamble that the city manager gave you in the beginning that says that this is this amount, but this is a one-time expense of $735 for your capital. So you take a look at what I've done there, and I took that amount of money. That's $1,998,000. And the fire structure fees of $1,175,000 that you say that's coming in on your budget. And if you do the same mathematical process, 4,870 units, 80% of the whole thing, everything falls down, that it comes out to be $132,000, not $192,000. That's on the bottom of my form. Now, in this, it says, take the, that the public is entitled to the data. I've got no data from you except this, this information. And $132,000, look on my next page, I did a spreadsheet for you that, that you're, 700 and.
I'm following you, John. I just want to make sure that what you are doing is you're looking at the proposed 2021-22 budget?
Correct.
Okay, and so you're recalculating based on these numbers? Is that what you're doing?
Correct.
Okay. So we didn't, you know that we didn't do a recalculation, right?
And I'm saying you should.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, and here's why. On to my next page.
Okay. Keep going.
$750,000. I'm extrapolating here, this is not factual. $750,000 divided by $192 is 3906. So you got, anticipating out of the 4870, 3906 are going to be able to, are going to be paying that amount. They didn't opt out. But take that 3906, multiply that times what I say it should be is 132,000. That's $515,000, 592.
Okay.
So now you take the 750, subtract that, the difference is $234,000. And what I read to you from your staff report was that it could not exceed the reasonable amount. You're exceeding the reasonable amount by $234,000. And I can go on, on with this, and you know, the city, the city says, there's two things. One, you shouldn't have a $2 million thing here. And then, where the hell is the UUT? Now, it's not, it's not a dedicated. But the city had said to the people in Proposition S that was in 2018, "The city is responsible for essential services including public safety such as emergency response and paramedic services." Measure S would continue funding these with locally controlled and not subject to that. So you continually say, in all of, all of Measure D, which is 2014, and I have a document.
Okay.
Try to go as fast as I can, a document from 2014.
All right, Mr. Zites, I thank you very much for the documents because I know that you do always come prepared. This is a lot of information regarding the UUT and what was written in 2014. You and I have discussed this many times. You know that many of the people who are currently on this council were not part of that language. But I will thank you for your extended presentation. I know that, is there anything, I know I gave him extra time. Is there any issues with that extra time?
No. So this isn't a quasi-judicial hearing, it's a public hearing on a fee. The council can have reasonable time limits. Your default's three. I know Mr. Zites had wanted additional time. I think you've given him an extra five minutes. So it's from city attorney perspective, if you feel that adequate time has been given, you're free to end it.
I know you are on the last page, so I do want you to be complete in your thoughts so that we can make a decision on it.
And back to the executive summary.
Okay, so we're going?
Back to the executive summary, because I said something and I want to prove it to you, okay? This is from, because it's from your consultant. In the middle of the page, "The agency must also make available to the public data supporting the new or increased fee."
Okay, and again, we're talking about the fee that is set for today?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Well.
And just to answer, just to answer your thing, that you weren't on the council in 2014, but two people were on the council in 2014 that are no longer here. One's deceased and one's not there anymore. And they didn't speak up last year, I don't know why they got locked off, that said that UUT is for that. And just one last, could you just make one last comment?
I will let you make a closing remark, but.
Okay, I guess this will be my closing remark.
I just, I, and I appreciate you coming prepared. But I do have to be fair to everyone else who wants to speak in this setting.
This, this, read this one last document.
Can you refer us to a page?
It should be second from the end. I believe. Yes. Second from the end. This is a document that was done through in March for your consultant versus looking at public information regarding cannabis. But this is page six of that report, and you're saying that this UUT doesn't have anything to do with this. It has no resource capability, shouldn't be subtracted, not one dime. But here's what the city said as a preamble to the people. "The city's contracts with the county for police and fire protection are skyrocketing, and the city's budget has significant structural budget deficit. Revenue sources such as utility users' tax, UUT, have not kept pace with the public safety costs." Doesn't that say that you people just said that the UUT is for public safety costs? "In fact, UUT revenue has been declining." And then, this is the question to the people. "The City of Canyon Lake is considering asking voters to repeal the utility users' tax." to repeal the utility users' tax, sometimes called UUT, and replace it with a parallel tax of $350 per year on each home to pay for police and fire." Why would you replace your utility tax for police and fire if it wasn't used in the first place?
You're referring to the, um, I just wanna make sure we're clear. You're referring to the, the question that was used on cannabis? This is from the survey.
The survey, the other five pages were all on cannabis, this was this way, and the people had said, forty-nine percent of the people opposed another tax. But this just goes to the veracity of the, of the, of the, of the city as such. Some of you weren't there in fourteen, some of you there were eighteen, but, but to not say, to not say that the utility user tax has no revenue towards the, the paramedics, I think that's, I think that's a shame. And anybody who can, who can sit back and say, "None of that utility user tax," 'cause that's what you said, "None of that utility user tax should offset any of the costs for paramedics." And that's a shame, 'cause that's a lie.
I've taken, I've taken good notes, and I have, I will go through this a little bit more in depth. Um, some of this document I have personally looked at. I, I didn't make the connection between what the cannabis company put out as a-
No, it's not the cannabis, the city, the city did this.
This is from-
The city.
HDL.
No, uh, I've got a copy of it over here, I can give you your co, uh, copy to you, I'm sure, and I can give you a copy.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Zeit.
Just one quick thing, just a sec.
Mr. Zeit, you've really exhausted your opportunity, and I-
But I want the data.
Okay, so you are making a public records act request.
How can you approve this if you don't have the data? And, and it says the data should be going to the public. The public is, can request this, you know, that's not what it says, that's not what it says.
Thank you so much. Any other opponents?
Thank you, so, uh, I do have an additional card. Mr. Montgomery, I just wanted to confirm you're speaking as an opponent on item number eight, is that correct?
I'm approving the oral vote, but I have some information. Proponent, proponent, there's probably a proponent.
Okay, so we can move on to response by proponents?
Yes, so then you would be in response. There's, there's procedural requirements.
I'm just, Travis Montgomery, I was here in 2014. I was the chairman of Measure D. We made it very, very clear that this was funds for the general operations of the city. It was not funds for the fire department. Now you can take that, and the simple way to look at it was, and we knew we needed funds to support the fire department and secure, and police, but you take and put that money into the city budget, call it five-hundred thousand dollars, for general fund operations, that frees up five-hundred thousand dollars that was in the city budget, and now you can take that five-hundred thousand and put it in the police and fire protection pocket. But we could not say with a fifty percent vote that that money is identified in any way, shape, or form to go specifically for that, and it did not go, and does not go for that. There's maybe some financial, uh, calculations that do that, but that money goes in and it frees up, as I said, then general fund money that can now be placed, uh, into the fire and police. But I was there in twenty-fourteen, as I said, and I was chairman of that. And I wrote a lot of the ballot measures and the publicity and the things we sent out to the, uh, to the citizens, so just wanted to add those comments.
They are appreciated. Okay, anyone else?
I have no more cards on this item.
Okay. I'm going to close this public hearing at 8:12. Now we move into discussion by city council. All right, I'm gonna start with you, Larry.
Just a couple of comments on the utility tax. I was not on council, but I was here in fourteen. And for those who have or weren't part or around, and John, you were here. One of the problems with a specific tax, especially a public safety tax or public safety earmark, was the required voting, and we fell short. Order to go and have a revenue stream, which was a utility tax, which was about the only thing that we had, we had to make it a general fund basis, which changed the voting down to fifty-some percent, which it passed. That was the history behind why the utility tax is not a public safety tax as, or a public safety earmarked, although funds do get into those budgets, because obviously we cannot fund everything we've got without trying to use all of our revenue. We've tried to make this fair and equitable. I'm sure that with our consultants and others, we've tried to look at what is out there. Uh, the comment on plagiarism, I have to say that this is a public document. This is public domain, public, the public agencies in the state of California share information all the time on programs. It is not uncommon to find a paramedic program, a paramedic structured program, whether it's in the city of Fullerton, Anaheim, or whatever, that might be modeled in a city in Yuba City. Just because the structure is there, it's public domain, and it is not plagiarism, and is not thief. It is designed so that the wheel does not have to be reinvented. I think we're trying to balance the budget, we're trying to make some things that are positive here. Maybe the mechanism wasn't as clear to some. Obviously, a lot of work has been done on this, but my estimation is that this is a program that has been validated statewide, and I think it's, it's here for our city.
And Dale?
I, I kind of understand your point, you're basically saying you feel like maybe we're over, overfeeding people for a service provided, that's your basic position. And there's a lot of ways to look at that, and a lot of ways to divide it, what, what portions of the cost is medical, what portions of the cost is, is, uh, emergency services. And the staff has been reviewing this, and they've come back, and, and in their minds, they've committed to us that, that this is appropriate, the appropriate number. This year even, the staff says that there's even room for somewhat of an increase, uh, but, but we believe we don't need to put that in place, according to the staff, so, um, I appreciate what you're doing, I, I sometimes wish maybe, uh, you know, we could meet ahead of time or something, but it's very complicated to cover all that in a short period of time, and, uh, just, thank you for your comments, but, uh, I appreciate your concern.
Jeremy, anything?
Yes, thank you. I just wanna say, obviously, this has been a very difficult conversation for several people. I know the last year has been a year full of educating Canyon Lakers on what this program is, how it's billed, how it works. I wanna give a shout-out to my colleagues, if they're receiving the same phones and text messages that I am receiving, um, I think we've done a good job over the last year of educating folks, and if that's not enough, our numbers show it, considering we, we had about three to three-hundred-and-twenty people who opted, um, out of the program, and this year we only have about a hundred that opted out. So I just wanna say kudos to the staff, uh, my colleagues on council, for getting out the information on why we went this direction and how we did it. I know that it's completely changed from the beginning to now, so, uh, it's been a very complicated program, but, um, through education and through, uh, the mailings that we've done, and just being accessible as, as council members for the community, I really think we've changed, uh, their rhetoric, and that's why we've seen so many people, um, stay opted in, so thank you for that.
I just need a, a second, I'm looking through everything that was provided by Mr. Zeit. Additionally, I did watch your podcast, so you know, so I'm familiar with some of your statements. You know, I will say, like Larry, um, the UUT is really the issue of a Band-Aid. I know that when I ran for council, that's exactly how I couched it. If you do a review of UUTs across the, the county, or at least across the Inland Empire, there are UUTs that are as high as twelve-point-five percent. The average, I believe, is around eight percent. Canyon Lake has one of the lowest UUTs, um, and that's what the citizens chose. Obviously, I think we will see some increased revenue based on UUT, because what we've heard is water rates are gonna go up, electric rates are going up twenty-six percent. So sad and good, but at the, but at the same time, if you, if you think that the UUT money is not going to pay for our contracts, which are both in excess of a million dollars, that, that doesn't make sense to me, given that's approximately, I mean, that pays for maybe one, right? So, um, I guess the question of, should we replace this with a parcel tax? You know, that may be a question for council people who have not made promises to not raise taxes. I'm not one of those council people. And so we're doing, I think, what we can to keep costs manageable for our residents without death by taxes, 'cause there are fees that we cannot control. Okay, any further discussion? Can you, Madam City Clerk, give me a tabulation of written protests for both the solid waste collection as well as the EMS?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm deeming the protests valid for both the solid waste collection rates and for the EMS program fees, uh, but a majority does not exist, so we may proceed.
Okay. And that's on both items?
Correct, protest valid for both the solid waste collection rates and for the EMS program fees.
Okay, at this point-
Madam, if I could ask the city clerk to let us know the number of protests for each?
Yes, thank you, I have one protest for the solid waste collection rates and one protest for the EMS program fees.
And that would be the fee as set for the sixty-one percent increase on the CRNR, and then the rate status quo on the EMS?
Correct, it would be for the fees provided in the resolution as exhibits A and B.
Madam Mayor, one point of clerk fashion, sixty-one cents a month, not sixty-one percent.
I'm sorry, didn't I not say, did I say percent? I meant cent, thank you. I prefer cents. Okay, um, all right. At this point, I'm looking for some action by city council. What I need to move on is a motion and a second.
I make a motion? I'll say it.
Thank you, and that is a motion and second to adopt resolution number 2021-28, is that correct? Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Okay, moving forward to business item number nine. Business item number nine is additional information on the selection of a consultant to pre, prepare an update to the city's general plan safety element. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. You may recall that this item was on the agenda last month. Uh, the council asked, uh, for staff to go back and provide some clarification on the experience levels of the, um, the bidders. Uh, I'd like to ask our city planner, Jim Morsi, to make the presentation on this item.
Hi, welcome.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Yes, as the city manager indicated, you wanted some additional information with respect to the particular consultants. There was inquiries related to, uh, experience in the area, the type of work they had undertaken, and so forth. So I tried to take the documentation that they had, I also went to some of the jurisdictional websites and just attempted to find out some additional information to piece some elements together. I did not speak to any of the consultants, so it's, everything was written that I tried to glean out and, and place before you. So I identified the, the three particular consultants, um, and I hope it was adequate to address, uh, what you were looking for. So in, in general, it was, what was the overall company experience, their, um, safety element experience. In the case of one consultant, it seemed as though there was an individual, um, who had a lot of past experience, some level of involvement, so I noted that as part of that particular company. It's, it's a company that is relatively new. And then a third company that had a lot of, um, uh, local hazard planning, um, a significant amount of that, and they had done several safety elements, but most of their work focused on the, the hazard planning element. And if there's questions, I'll try to respond to them. Oh, and the recommendation to the council is the selection of DUDAC predicated on their expertise, the technical capability of their staff, the balancing, in my personal opinion, of the documentation versus the environmental, um, effort, uh, necessary to, to do the work.
Okay, thank you. This, if you recall, this was, we wanted additional information on the suitability based on the consultant recommended, and I know you had some questions, Larry?
Yes, I did. Really, the bottom line is, why is there such a disparity between Atlas and the one that you? I mean, it is twenty-three thousand dollars difference. Is it just because of experience, is that, I mean, I'm having a hard time, I see both of them, EPC is in the same ballpark, so-
Right.
Is Atlas lowballing it to get the job?
The proposals, uh, kinda reminded me of an accordion. So in one case, you have, uh, the accordion is collapsed with EPC, for example, on the environmental. They said it's five thousand dollars. Atlas pulled the accordion apart and said the environmental is just about the cost to do the document. And DUDAC is collapsed it a bit, and I think is a little bit more proportional. So I looked at it as, um, well, first of all, I'm not sure I can exactly answer your question. I tried to look at it more as proportionality and who is gonna be involved in the work. I don't know the reason that, um, the environmental is gonna take as much effort as the document. And I think that's your question of, the Atlas is gonna be able to do the work for substantially less, but then they've also got the environmental document that weighs equally as much. And that, just to my thinking, is odd. And I, so it could be, your, your scenario of lowballing it is possible. Are all the firms capable of a certain level of effort? Of course, they all have that experience. Who is the most capable, I think, in staff's opinion, is the, is DUDAC. And that's what we're recommending. Is, I, I hope I didn't beat around the-
Well, I was looking, because a lot of times when somebody comes in and we've got a, uh, three bids, two are close and one's way low, they're either gonna come in and, and do change orders on you, or their scope of work isn't as complete as the other bidder, or maybe they're just trying to break into the market and they're willing to come in and, and take a job so they've got credit for, you know, taking on the element, safety element plan. So that's why I was asking, I'd say, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dale?
No questions.
Jeremy, you had questions on this last time?
Yeah, I had several questions. You know, I would, the original question I asked at our last council meeting was, is could you go back and find other cities that are using the recommendation that you're giving to the council, which is the top bidder? Were we able to find other cities and speak to those cities and see how their experience outweighs a bid that's $20,000 more than the others?
No, I did not.
I, I, I move that, you know, we, we look at, I think, I think we originally budgeted $50,000 for this project. The bid that came to us is just over 60. There's another bid out there for $40,000. You know, I recommend and I'll lean on my colleagues for this, but I recommend that we go with the lowest bid for this project.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If I may. It's a very technical document that needs to be produced. And talking with our city planner, Mr. Morsy, I think, I think staff is in agreement that probably any one of these firms can produce the document that will meet the requirement to have the safety element in our general plan, right? In staff's estimation, DUDAC is the most qualified of, of the bidders here. Are they the only firm that, that can do the job? Probably not. So staff's approach here, because the safety element is a very important part of our plan and what the city does, we wanted to have what we thought was the most qualified firm do this work. That's, that's why it remains staff's recommendation. However, probably any one of these firms can do a decent job, and it's entirely at the pleasure of the council, which way you'd want to go. Whatever your comfort level is.
I have, my question is, what percentage or what part in terms of components is going to be relative to fire? When we're talking about a safety element, is this going to be part and parcel of something that is a component of our department?
Is that asked?
The, the safety element has quite a wide variety of topics and issues that need to be covered. Yes, fire is one of them. Evacuation, flooding, soil hazards relative to geologic, landslides, things of that nature. There's also a component in there of climate adaptation, climate change. So, but I, I'm not sure that that's your, really your, your question when you ask about...
No, I think that is my question. My, my feeling is, you know, I want to make sure that what we are presenting to our community is the best that we can do. And if there is a consultant that is going to prepare a document that is going to be comprehensive in that way, if it is $10,000 more, my, my feeling is I don't want to nickel and dime everything that we're spending on, especially when it relates to safety. So that would be my statement related to that. Do you guys have anything to weigh in on that? Jeremy? Anything?
Nope.
Okay, so you made a recommendation, Jeremy?
Yes.
Okay, and your recommendation, can you restate it?
Recommendation, I would go with the lowest bidder on this project.
Which is Atlas versus DUDAC, is that correct?
Yes, which is Atlas, correct.
Okay, so that is your motion?
Yes, I'll turn into a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Atlas.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we need a roll call item.
Councilmember Green?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Hi.
Councilmember Welty?
Hi.
Mayor Castillo?
No.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on to item number 10. This is an amendment to our current cooperative agreement with the County of Riverside for Fire Protection Services. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So our current agreement with the county for fire services expires at the end of this month. As we all know, the city is in the process of putting together a city fire department, which will launch January 1st, 2022. And so in the time between July 1st and December 31st, we need fire coverage. So the agreement before you is an amendment to our existing agreement that extends the existing agreement for six months. The extended agreement would expire 8 o'clock AM, January 1st, 2022. The estimated total cost for this extended agreement, given to us by the county, is $1,022,904. Again, that's for six months. And that concludes the staff presentation on this item.
Okay, I have some questions. This looks like the same agreement that we've had, just with an extension for six months?
Correct.
Okay, when, um, I had asked Chief Weiser about the, the fact that we're paying for volunteer services, but we've never seen volunteers in Canyon Lake. I still see that as a line item. Are we going to get them since we're paying for them, or are we not?
I guess we'd have to ask Chief Weiser that question.
Historically, we haven't, though, so...
Yeah, I think, I think the county, the county has a volunteer program. My understanding is the county has a volunteer program. And like with a lot of their personnel and, and equipment, they get moved around throughout the county as they, as they deem necessary and deem fit. So it could have been over the years that from time to time, we might have had a volunteer in and out of our station. But I, I don't believe we've seen a volunteer stationed there on a regular, on a regular basis.
Okay.
Yes, we have. We used to have volunteers.
When was that?
Not since I've been here.
It's been a while back.
Yeah.
And, and we, we had some active folks here. We actually had an active explorer post. But over time, the volunteers were disbanded in the county, except for certain things that we had requirements. So that changed how they did here. They had volunteers, actually, we had a squad that had volunteers on it. So anyway, that was some time ago. That is, since hasn't been. The question I have on our agreement, though, I, I read it. Can we extend it to month by month after the January date if we need to?
That's something we'd have to ask the county. It's something we could take up when we next meet with Chief Weiser, for sure. I doubt the county would be willing to go month to month, because I think that's difficult for them in terms of...
Accounting wise?
Yeah, planning and accounting wise. I imagine they would be willing to do an extension of, of some timeframe.
Okay.
But month to month might be difficult for them.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and then this also includes the fire engine use agreement for them maintaining our fire engine, is that right?
It does, yeah. And it's kind of an insurance policy. If, if our engine were to go out for any reason, they also ensure that we have a county-owned engine that comes in and replaces it until ours is, is fixed. So it, it would be risky for us not to, not to have that in place.
Okay. And that's consistent with our past contract?
It is. The price has gone up, but yes.
Dale?
No, I'm good. I, I think we have to renew, renew, and it's time now. And we've got six months to get our, our own fire department up and placed. And I, I think the stopgap is an excellent idea to get us there.
Okay.
I mean, the good, the good news is that we have a contract. There's, contract is somewhat of a basis on how many services they provide us. And for, for a little bit of the time, they've been able to actually come in under their estimate due to changes with COVID and stuff. So even though we signed a contract, it's not an absolute contract in that there are, there are places where they have been able to reduce their fees, which has been good for us.
Jeremy?
Now, unless Councilman Green has anything to say, I'd be willing to make the motion that we move forward.
I, I'm concurrence.
Okay, I know there are public comment items, or public comments on this item, sorry.
The public comment cards I have are for fire, which are for item number 14, unless somebody has a specific comment on the amendment to the cooperative agreement with the County of Riverside? No, thank you. So all comments are for item 14, the fire department startup update, correct? Yes, thank you. Okay, so no comments on this item.
Okay. So Jeremy has made a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Did you get that?
I got Councilmember Welty.
Okay, and a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Welty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Item number 11 relates to a cooperative agreement with the County of Riverside for dispatch and communication services.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. This is a big deal. We're very excited to bring this tonight. And I'll ask our interim fire chief, Jeff Latenders, to make the presentation.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem via the telephone, and members of the council, city staff, Jeff Latenders, your interim fire chief. As it was directed to the city manager back on November 4th, 2020, a decision was made to start a fire department. One of the most important components of that fire department is the ability to receive 911 calls, to be able to dispatch your resources, to be able to coordinate those resources, communicate with those resources. And in the study that was prepared by ESCI as part of the decision-making process to move here, they had made contact with Riverside County to see if Riverside County would be interested in providing dispatch and communication services to the new city of Canyon Lake Fire Department. They expressed an interest, and so when I came on board, I followed up with that interest to see if it was something we wanted to pursue. We also looked at other venues. We looked at other dispatch centers here in Riverside County to see if there was a possibility that we could form up with them, what the feasibility would be, what the cost would be, what the time would be. And at the end of the day, the most cost-efficient and effective means of providing those vital 911 communications is to stay with the County of Riverside as our dispatch services. So that's the agreement you have before us tonight. The cost for that six-month service, and this is a different six-month service than we just talked about before, this is from January 1, when we start our new fire department, until June 30th of, of next year. The cost for that is $55,798. The County of Riverside also dispatches for three other, or two other cities, the city of Calamasa and the city of Idowall. And they also provide dispatch services for three tribal fire departments here. So it's not the first time that they're doing this. They are experienced in doing with it. They will be able to set up the CAD and the run cards. And all of that stuff would be the same, and it should be a very smooth transition for us. So it's my recommendation that city council adopt Resolution 2021-29 and approve a dispatch and communication services with the County of Riverside. And I'm available for any questions you might have.
And you said this is a six-month contract?
Correct. The, the cost is for six months, I'm sorry, the contract is actually for two and a half years. Either, either partner can back out with a six-month notice. But the cost that we're voting on tonight, or we're bringing before you tonight, is for six months.
Okay. Larry?
Question. MDT hardware onboard, is the county providing that, or are we buying it and they're, they're putting the software in it?
So later on this evening in the, in the budget, you hopefully will be approving the new startup fire department cost. And in that cost are the new radios, the new mobile data computers, and all the stuff that we need for that. In the contract, County of Riverside are, has already installed the radios and the MDCs in Engine 60, the radio and the station alerting at Station 60. And so all that stuff will say there'll be no cost. We buy the new hardware, we buy the computers for the mobile data computers, we buy the radios, and they will program them, and all of that is part of the cost. They own the licensing and the software, we own the hardware.
What frequency are we going to be on?
I have not got that information yet, but it should be if it looks, works like Marietta, I'm sorry, if it works like Calamasa and Idowall, they're on their primary dispatch frequency for this area.
Okay, and there will be a tactical?
There will be a tactical too, correct.
Okay.
We should see no change in the dispatching of the fire apparatus that we do currently have today.
Okay, does the county have an RMS system?
We will be getting our own RMS system, and in the budget proposal before you this evening is, is money for that.
Okay, thank you.
Dale?
I, I think this is a great and important piece of our moving ahead for the fire department. I think that using Riverside County has so many advantages. One, you're able to communicate with basically the whole fire system the way it appears. They're experienced, they're knowledgeable. When you bring on a, a new piece of a organization, having really solid experienced pieces already to work with seem to be very helpful. So I'm really happy we're going this way.
Thank you.
Jeremy?
This is Big for Canyon Lake. Chief, awesome, awesome work, my friend. I know how, how much time and energy you put into this key component, and thank you for bringing it to us tonight. Congratulations, my friend. This is Big for Canyon Lake.
Thank you.
Are there any public comment cards on this item?
No comments on this item.
Okay, at this point, I would be looking for a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2021-29.
Motion?
29.
21, 21, 21, 29.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Green, and then a second from Mayor Protem Smith.
That sounded right to me.
That's what I heard, yes.
Thank you.
And a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Welty?
Aye.
Mayor Castillo?
Aye.
Motion carried to adopt Resolution Number 2021-29.
Okay. Thank you. Moving along. Item number 12 is an amendment to the agreement between the city of Canyon Lake and Hinder Lighter, D'Elamas, and Associate HDL.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask our finance director, Terry Shea, to make the presentation on this item.
Your Honorable, I will take this up. Your Honorable Mayor, Member of City Council, we currently have a, a contract with HDL. They monitor our sales tax. But we just get limited reports and only annual meetings. So we'd like to go to quarterly meetings, and the service they offer is sales and use and transaction tax revenues can be increased through a system of continuous monitoring, identification, and correction of allocation errors. So they look at our reports, and they look at all our businesses. They can see which ones are up, which ones are down. And if things are misallocated, then they will go after that and get it reallocated to us. I think we currently pay about, what, $1,400 a year, Chris? And so this contract then would go to $4,800. And then additional reports for sales tax analysis, $1,200 per year. And there's only like, I think they are the only company that does this in the whole state. I think out of the 430 cities, I think they do it for 429 of them. And so it's a good, solid company, and it's employee-owned, so it's very... So, any questions on the contract?
So basically, we're looking to make sure that none of the sales tax revenue is falling through the cracks?
Right.
And TOT as well?
No.
Okay.
They don't offer TOT, but they do have a property tax division as well. So we have not requested that service. But they do monitor each of our businesses, they provide reports, and they give us exception reports, so if things are dropping. And it's really useful information, and a lot of it's confidential, so it only goes to like city manager and the finance department and then the council, so...
Does, does that include home-based businesses?
Yes.
That's huge.
Any business that files a sales tax claim, so...
With the increase and the fallout, is there, is that going to be an offset by any chance? Because I also looked at, they're going to, they're going to be paid 25 percent of the...
Just like a one-time fee, right? So if they go out and find like $50,000, I mean, they get a percentage of that. And like Calamasa at one point was, used these guys, I think, for property tax or sales tax.
Uh huh.
And they found like an error in the formula, and they ended up getting Calamasa, you know, like a million and a half dollars more a year on the property tax side, so. But they do get a fee for recovery.
Okay.
And sometimes it could hurt you. They could find something that came to us that shouldn't have come to us, that should have went to, you know, like Elsinore somewhere. So there is a downside for that, too.
Do they give you like a cursory audit by any chance that says...
Yes, sir, yeah. They provide an invoice, and they show what they collect and what they didn't collect. I think we paid, what, 96 cents to them last week or something, so it's, it's usually a very small percentage, so...
Okay, and so is this an amortized process that they do? How, how does this, how do these funds come back to us?
They file a claim with the State Board of Equal, or not the State Board... They file a claim with the state board of equal, or not the state board, who is it now? It's, yeah. So they file a claim and they get the money.
So they're, they're acting as our agent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, this has been on my personal to-do list for a while. I remember the first time after I came onboard, when I met with HDL, I thought this is fantastic. They provided a snapshot of all the sales tax producers in the city, kind of a rank order of, you know, how much each, each business was producing and through, through COVID, they were very helpful, helping the city understand what, what our sales tax impacts would be. But I remember the first time I met with them, they, they presented me with information for the last quarter. And I said, "That's great." I said, "Where, where's the rest of the year?" And they say, "Well, you only pay us for one quarter." So, so I have an annual meeting and every year at that annual meeting, I get that same one quarter. I have no idea what happened the rest of the year, so this is, is an important step I think.
And they're very thorough and, you know, all, all these, you know, things are public record, but they have a way of getting it, so.
The basic question is, you believe we'll get cost recovery from this and that this service will basically pay for itself? So I know that we're going to pay them $4,800 and we're going to be insured that we're, they're going to help us make sure we don't lose sales tax funding, you think that?
Yes.
That the expense of the money is worth the return we'll get from the service?
I, I think just with the updates to where the businesses are and for forecasting and budgeting with sales tax, which is a highly, it's a very hard thing to budget, sales tax. So that, that alone is worth, you know, to me, the price just to help with the budgeting, so.
So partially it's recovery and partially it's predict, predict, or predictions for the future?
Yes, sir.
That's a blend of both?
Yeah.
And you both feel it's worth it?
They're very solid companies, so.
Jeremy?
You know, I know how hard Chris has been trying to get this name checked off of his whiteboard in his office. You know, I think, you know, I, I support this 100% guys. I know that the two of you have worked hard on, on coming up with a solution here. And it goes back to the whole methodology of the council trying to, you know, put the city in the 21st century and also just, you know, bring it up to speed. And I think, I think this is a prime example of that, so I'm in support.
Are there any public comment cards?
No comments.
Okay. So I would need motion and a second to approve item number 12, the agreement. Amendment to the agreement.
Second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Did you?
You got first and second, okay.
Did you get that?
Yes, I got Councilmember Welty and second by Councilmember Green.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Welty.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item 12.
Okay. Item number 13, you don't get to leave.
All right. Is Parkland ready?
Okay, we have a PowerPoint?
I'm an old person, I don't understand technology, so. All right, so what you have before you is the proposed 2122 budget. We had a workshop at the council meeting in May and we had some cleanup items. I think we added about $22,000, $23,000 worth of expenditures in the general fund and then a few thousand in the rental fund, but overall, it's the same budget that was presented in May. So you can see, the general fund projected revenues are $6,878,700. And you can see the biggest part of our revenues are the highlighted, you know, so property tax VLF, fire structure fee, property taxes, utility users' tax, the EMS subscription fee, and then the franchise fees. And that's the bulk of our revenues. Any questions on any of the revenues? And so this is our other funds. So we, we all have the gas tax funds, which we use for streets, council's aware of that one, Measure A also. The AQMD trust fund, we've accumulated money and we purchased two vehicles in this last year's, or the current year's budget.
And those were the fire vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
And so then the law enforcement grants, we get about $150,000 to $160,000 a year and we use that to offset the sheriff's costs. And then the rental fund, that's some rent income and then a loan from the general fund to do some improvements. So general fund expenditures, the total general fund expenditures are $7,450,000 and they're broken out by personnel, which is $1,662, O and M, which is $5,334, and then capital. And you can see the, the personnel this year are up quite a bit because of fire, but everything else is pretty consistent with the previous year. And so we also have it by general government, which includes the city council, city attorney, city manager, city clerk, finance, public works department. And then we have developmental services, planning, building and safety, public works, admin, and then the national pollutant storm drain, and then code enforcement. And then public safety is law enforcement, fire, medical aid, county, city fire department, which is new this year, emergency preparedness, and then animal control. So you can kind of see where we spend our money. So 64% of our budget goes to public safety, so that's, so any questions on where the money goes?
So when you say public safety, those, that's based on the current situation with the county?
Yes.
The proposed expenditures for startup and then our...
Right.
Have, has the 5% that is expected to be distributed to contract cities from RSO?
It's in there.
It's in there, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So the public safety makes up the law enforcement, which is the sheriff's, the county fire, and then our own fire department, emergency preparedness, and the animal control.
So the, so the increase that was...
Yes.
Is already...
Yeah.
Okay.
We got that from the sheriff's way back in April or May. And it includes that 5% increase.
Okay.
So here's, 22% is general government, 14% developmental service, and 64% public safety. And so here's our fund balance summary. So I, I think we're going to end fiscal year '21 here in about 28 days with about a $4.2 million surplus. So revenues are $6,878. Funds available would make it $11 million. Budgeted appropriations is $7 million. And so then the $3,667 in, in fund balance. And I think it's about a $571,000... Seven. How much is the deficit issue? Well, I can tell from here. So the proposed deficit is $572,000, but included in that $572,000 is $312,000 in capital equipment for the fire department and $423,000 in other startup costs. So for a total of $735,000, so without those additional startup costs, we had had a projected surplus of about $163,000, so. But it has over $700,000 worth of startup costs. And hopefully those are one-time and then we'll replace them over time as we'll build up reserves. And then this is the other funds. So we have gas tax, street-related, Measure A, street-related, AQMD, nothing planned yet, so we'll accumulate the money for a couple more years. Law enforcement, that's, I think we're going to get approximately $160 this year and we have $20,000 in reserves, so we're going to offset the general fund, public safety by $180,000. The miscellaneous grants, if we get grants, this is where we show those. The rental fund is, most of that is capital improvements. And so that's it for the budget. Any questions?
Larry? Dale?
No, I, thank you for doing the budget. I think, I think it's a credible budget. I, the obvious truth is you can't predict the future. You're setting a budget, you're predicting what's going to happen in the future, you're going to, you're setting fees based on that expectation. And to John's point that in the future, sometimes as we know through COVID, what we predict doesn't necessarily happen.
Sure.
So at that point, to John, just to be your case, is that at some point in time in the future, are, are the expectations of this budget aren't correct. And it does turn out that we're, we're expending more in, you say, user fees, we're collecting more in user fees that are appropriate, that at, at the end of the year, if that was ever happened, I would think that the, the city would find a way to refund those fees back. But I, I think the staff today did a good job on doing that prediction, of coming out and saying, "Here's what we think where the user fees will balance out with expenses." And as Chris said, I think he said the user fees are probably going to be under the expenses. Some of those expenses that could be covered by the user fees are going to have to be covered by the general fund. And from what I hear and from what I read, I, I think that's the truth. And so if at the end of the year, we get another episode like COVID and everything switches around, then we'll revisit and make sure that when we do our audits, we're in the right place. So that's the position, I believe. I believe you guys did a good job. I think it was credible and I believe in what you did here, so.
This last year shows, anything can happen, that's for sure.
Yes.
Just a couple of general comments on the budget. Obviously, this was a very high-level overview. We went into a little bit more depth last month and the finance and planning committee has, has reviewed the budget multiple times, the draft budget multiple times. I'd like to give a shout-out to city staff. Every department went through their budget, line item by line item, cut back where we could, added where, tried to anticipate what, what new costs might come up. This has been a several-month process to, to get here. I, you know, when you look at, at the revenues today, what a difference from two years ago, right? I mean, our revenue has increased over 25% without raising taxes at all. We're providing services at a level that should have been provided for a long time but weren't. We're in compliance across the board with all the requirements that we have to meet. And we have a very healthy budget. It's, it's always a little nerve-wracking to look at a deficit, but as Terry pointed out, this is a planned deficit, not a structural deficit anymore. It's a, it's based on our one-year cost for the fire department startup. Were it not for that, we'd be looking at a surplus of about $163,000. And once our department is launched, we should be experiencing ongoing savings year after year. And so overall, I would say the city's budget is very healthy and we're in a very good financial place.
Jeremy?
Yes, huge shout-out to staff, Terry, Chris, man, you guys killed it once again. I know how much, I mean, you know, a lot of Canyon Lakers, they don't quite know what goes into some of the processes that are done at City Hall and, you know, the, the staff that's there before you today, they're, they're busting their butt every day. They're in the conference room, going line by line, seeing every dollar that's spent. Madam Mayor and myself know because we were in our budget and finance meeting, we see the work that's been done, but kudos to the hard work on, in my opinion, turning around the city. And I know Councilman Green has more to say on it because he was there before we were, but man, it is a different light in Canyon Lake and, you know, we should be proud to be a part of the community that we are. It's just, it's just unbelievable. And yes, you know, we look at a deficit for all the right reasons, though. As you know, we have to invest in order to sustain and we're doing just that. We're investing in our community so that we can sustain the future of our community. And I'm, I'm proud to be part of, of this budget and to know that we're doing all the right things. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I just want to make a comment of, I'm grateful to staff for going through the city functions and cutting where we could. It's, it's, it's easy to ask other departments to cut, including public safety, but if we're not doing it internally, I think there's issues with that. So looking at what we run on as a city in general, aside from contractual obligations, I think is, is pretty important. Are there any public comment cards on this item? Okay. So based on this, we need a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021-30 and 2021-31.
Motion. Okay. You got it, Jeremy.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Welty.
Aye.
Mayor Castillo.
Aye.
Motion carried to adopt resolutions number 2021-30 and 2021-31.
Thank you so much. All right. Number 14 is fire department startup date. Chief Latendras, we have your main, main page press release here.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff, Jeff Latendras, your interim fire chief. Yeah, four months now, so this is our fourth update. This, this last month, I've been doing a lot of work with preparing to start the hiring process. So the city manager and human resources and I have met, we've outlined what the testing process will be for all of the different positions. We've contacted a company to help facilitate that testing process for us. So I actually sent out a flyer to the local paramedic schools and the fire academies here in Southern California announcing our upcoming positions. And in the two weeks since I've done that, I've already received 50 letters of interest for individuals who want to be notified when we start our recruitments. So that's a positive sign as we start to move forward. I also today had the honor of representing the city in Marietta at the Town Square Park Amplifier ribbon-cutting. And so it's a beautiful facility. I shared our, I shared your disappointment for not being there today and I sure hope you can give it an opportunity to go out there because it surely is a beautiful place to see. The last part is you have in front of you a press release that I put together for tonight's meeting. We've started to get some inquiries from the community and we are trying to be as open and transparent as we can be with the process as we move forward. And so what I'm going to do is a little bit different tonight, is I'm going to read this press release so that everyone can clearly see where we are and what's going on. So, "The city continues to make significant progress with the startup of the new fire department and remains on track for a January 1, 2022 launch date. Over the past few weeks, the city has received a number of questions from the community about the new fire department. While many of these questions have been addressed in previous updates, interim fire chief Jeff Latendras is committed to maintaining open and continual communications with the community throughout this process. In that spirit, below are his responses to the more common questions the city has received. First question, what will the staffing be for the new fire department? The new fire department will have 12 full-time employees. There will be a fire chief, a battalion chief, three fire captains, three fire engineers, and three firefighter paramedics. In addition, the fire department intends to hire a cadre of reserve firefighters and is looking into a paid call firefighter program. Daily staffing at the fire station will be one captain, one engineer, one firefighter paramedic, and one reserve staff, one reserve firefighter for a total staffing of four personnel per day. This will be a different from the current staffing that we see at Station 60. Currently, there is only a single fire captain assigned to Station 60 and he is on duty only three or four days a week. Also, Riverside County Cal Fire does not utilize a reserve firefighter at the station on a regular basis, so daily staffing should increase by one. It should be noted that the minimum staffing for the new fire department will be three personnel, as it is now. While we intend to have four with the reserve firefighter, there is an up, there, there could be times when a reserve firefighter is not always on duty. Question two, will the fire department provide paramedic service? The new fire department will have advanced life support equipment on the primary engine and on the reserve fire engine. In addition, there will be at least three paramedics in the department with a minimum of one on duty each day. In addition, in the salary schedule approved by the city council, if a fire captain or a fire engineer is also a paramedic, they will receive additional compensation for that skill. Thus, it is likely that more than one paramedic will be on one shift at any one time. Finally, there will be two complete sets of advanced life support equipment. The city will be able to staff the second fire engine for special events that occur in the city, such as the Fourth of July or other holidays. The city is working with Riverside County Emergency Magic, Emergency Medical Services Agency to ensure it meets all the requirements to be an ALS provider. Meetings, conversations, and emails have been exchanged between the city and REMZA. The application to be an EMS provider has been submitted to REMZA and is currently under review. The city has reached out to a medical director and still exploring options for medical oversight of the program. This is a requirement and the city will be in compliance. Why did the city buy a Type 6 fire engine when there is not one currently at the fire station? station? Prior to the city council's finally decision to form a municipal, municipal fire department, it contracted with Emergency Services Consulting International to prepare a feasibility analysis on how the new fire department, if initiated, should be designed and staffed. This report, along with supplemental research and meetings with regional leaders, is what the city council used to make the decision to form a new fire department. In this report, ESCI recommended that in addition to a new Type 1 structural fire engine, a Type 6 wildland fire engine should be purchased. As the fire station sits adjacent to approximately 800 acres of BLM open space land, it was determined that a response vehicle was needed. While there is not currently a Type 6 at the station, Riverside County Fire, Cal Fire does have off-road capability at other fire stations. The city purchased this apparatus so it could respond to wildland and remote rescue incidents within the city limits. Additionally, this vehicle was upgraded and has a larger fire pump, so it can be used to support structured fire operations if needed. This vehicle will not be staffed every day. Its staffing will come from the primary engine at the station or from supplemental staffing, reserve or paid call firefighters when the incident occurs in the BLM area or other hard-to-reach areas of the city. This concept is called cross-staffing and is very common in the fire service. Why is there no chief officer on duty 24/7 like we currently have? The new fire department will have two chief officers, one fire chief and one battalion chief. They will staff fire administration Monday through Friday and be available for immediate response to an incident. After hours, one of these chief officers will always be on call as a duty officer and be in a position to respond if needed. This is a requirement the city wanted to ensure and is common practice for smaller fire agencies. We believe this is an improvement over what we have under our current contract with the county, as currently no chief officers are specifically assigned at Fire Station 60. Will response times change with the new fire department? In addition to providing increased staffing and equipment out of Station 60, the city is also in the process of discussing and negotiation, negotiating automatic and mutual aid agreements with a number of surrounding agencies. The details of these negotiations remain confidential at this point as they were ongoing, but more information will become available as agreements are finalized. The city is committed to providing an exceptionally high level of service and will not settle for long response times. Keeping that in mind, that Canyon Lake averages just 2.1 calls for service per day within the city boundaries, this is a very, very manageable workload for a single station department. Yet, we know there will be times when we will need help from our neighbors. This is true for all but the largest of fire departments. Even Cal Fire needs to call for mutual aid on occasions. The city will enter into agreements that ensure outside help will be there when needed. What will happen when there is a need for specialized resources, such as truck companies, hazardous materials units, swift water rescue, urban search and rescue, arson investigations, et cetera? As with the previous question, some of these units may be included in automatic and mutual aid agreements. Until those agreements are formalized, we cannot go into specifics of how this will be handled. The city does understand that some specialized units may need to be requested on a fee-for-hire basis, meaning that you pay for them when you use them. For hazardous materials incident, the responsible party is typically held responsible to cover the costs for the event. The city may have to front the cost and then work for reimbursement after the incident is over. These type of incidents are exceedingly rare in Canyon Lake. How will you meet the two-in, two-out requirement on a house fire? There is a Cal OSHA law that is commonly referred to as the Respiratory Protection Act. There are many components of this law and it is the new fire department's intent to meet all the requirements, including fit testing and medical exams. The two-in, two-out component of this law states that when two individuals go into an immediately dangerous to life and health environment, then there must be two additional individuals with equipment to perform a rescue if needed. There is an exception to this law on an emergency scene if there is a known potential rescue of a person inside. In this instance, a two-person crew can make entry without having two people outside. In this scenario, a three-person engine company could make a rescue attempt. Also, the new fire department should have four personnel on duty each day, in addition any automatic or mutual aid response. The response is really no different than we have today, except that the city's fire department will have the added resources of reserve firefighters and possibly paid call firefighters. Where there'll be background checks for our employees? The hiring process for the new fire department will be very similar, if not identical, to many other fire departments in Southern California. The city will be utilizing a national company to conduct testing for firefighter, paramedics, and reserve firefighters. All will need to have completed a California Basic Fire Academy. There will be an oral interview with a paramedic skills assessment, a medical exam, and a background investigation by a third-party investigative firm will also be conducted. What kind of protection will the fire department employees have for medical, discipline, and working conditions since they do not have union representation? The issue of unionization has come up several times, mostly from union firefighters working in other departments. The city's decision to break away from Cal Fire is in no way an anti-union move. Should the employees of the city's new fire department decide to unionize, the city will welcome collective bargaining. In addition, from the onset, the city will have strong policy manuals that will explain the discipline, grievance, and other processes that may occur. In 2007, the state of California passed the Firefighter Bill of Rights, which clearly defines the rights of all firefighters. Those rights will apply to the new fire department and the city will absolutely respect them. What will the salaries be for the new fire department? The budget for the new fire department has been presented to the city council. All costs associated with the salaries and benefits are identified in the budget, which is available for viewing by any member of the public. The salary schedule for the new fire department is below and in the press release, it will be an attachment that they can include. The city looks forward to continue to provide these monthly updates, not just to the city council, but to the entire community so they can be apprised of the progress as the new fire department continues to develop. So we shared this with both our local news agencies today, or tonight, we will be doing that. It should be in the Friday flyer this week and so we're trying to keep the communication line open and be as transparent as we can as we continue to move forward. So that's my update for this month and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Larry?
You're welcome.
Awesome job, chief. Thank you for answering those questions. I appreciate it.
I know that you have been inundated with a lot of questions. I think the questions are good and I'm hopeful that a lot of the questions that may have been unanswered have now been answered. But if not, I think the city welcomes those continuous communications. I know you're working hard, so thank you.
We do. And again, as we're able to present new information, we're presenting every, every bit that we can as it moves forward. And sometimes it just takes a little bit longer before we can say, this is what we've got. Tonight, we were able to bring forward an agreement for communications and dispatching. We're still working on all those other agreements.
Okay. I know there's public comment cards.
Yes, ma'am. We're going to start with Michael Zimmerman.
That email sounds strikingly familiar to me, the one that I wrote. So thank you for answering some of those, those questions, chief. However, I do have some more things to say about the, the fire department. The mayor was gracious enough to sit down and have a two-and-a-half hour meeting with myself about a month and a half ago. I presented her with a lot of these questions that some were answered tonight and some weren't. I was under the assumption that they were going to get answered a little sooner than this, so I reached out to a few other people. Still no response. I actually called the chief twice, no response from him. So during the last city council meeting, when there was no questions, the city manager said that to reach out to you guys. I think the line of communication has been pretty poor, to be quite honest with you, on some very simple questions, some of those that got answered. The one thing that I would say, as you guys are moving forward with this fire department, is for us as citizens, how is this going to benefit us from a safety side? Not from a money side or anything else, but me as a citizen, when I drive out of the gate, how do my family and friends and fellow Canyon Lakers receive a better service than we currently have? I don't see that in the makeup that we are currently putting forward. There was some, some, he did answer some of the staffing questions. However, I would still like to know what the makeup of the fire engine is every day. He spoke of cross-staffing. I just asked him or would ask in that email, what does that staffing model look like? Are we putting people on the squad or are we keeping them on the fire engine? I think that was a little bit better on that. The chief officer thing, I don't necessarily agree with, with him on that. We're a very active community. From Friday till Monday morning is probably our most active in this community. It takes that higher level of supervision to step forward and run the major incidents that we've been having lately. Obviously, the storage fire was exceptionally large, but we've had other three to four fires, two garage fires, Gray Fox. With the proposed fire department that we currently have, we just can't handle those situations. We're paying for one fire station right now and essentially we're a department that gets three. Forty-two percent of the 1,008 calls are ran by Engine 60. We receive as much help from outside as we do from our own fire engine, that being 41%. Engine 5 and 94 are running. I don't see how we can do the same good for our community and for our people with one fire engine, with one group of people. Chief said that they're working on auto aid and mutual aid agreements. Well, when I wasn't getting answers to the questions that I was sending in, I decided to reach out to a lot of people. That is drastically different from the information that I got when I was speaking with county fire chiefs, from city managers from Lake Elsinore, from the city of Wildomar.
Okay, we have to cut you off. Three minutes.
Can I have a little extra time, please, ma'am?
Can you wrap it up?
I mean, I can. So as I go on, the questions that were being asked are not being answered like you guys said they were. I look forward to those opportunities. There was supposed to be an advisory committee. I got two emails from them, from Mayor Protem, from yourself. Nothing was answered. I think the transparency, although some of the things were answered now, need to continue. They need to get better and we need to know what kind of service that we're going to get for our people. The response times are going to be pulling.
I gotta, I have to cut you off since it is public comment and not a public hearing, but thank you so much. Next, public comment.
So I've received a request from one of the other speakers to give his time to Mr. Zimmerman.
That's okay, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to Timothy Adams.
I'm sorry, just before you start, can you give him a warning? So I think maybe if you had had a warning, you would have been able to stay on time. So two minutes, I'll just kind of, when you have 30 seconds.
Cut me off.
We don't want to cut anyone off, that's.
I've got a lot more than three minutes. But honorable counsel, Tim Adams off early round. Larry Green's very knowledgeable of me and my background. I've met with the city manager in the past. I was the proponent and assisted with Measure S with the utility tax. Though it wasn't the best answer, it was something to get us by, but it needs to be very clear that that was for offsetting police and fire, keeping full-time model or Schedule A staffing, full-time captain, the depth that we currently have, the services that we have, the specialty equipment, the training facility that all goes with that, to protect Canyon Lake. So I want to be on record that though it's a general fund draw, that was to offset the future cost and inflation of the fire department specifically and law enforcement that was a big part of the city increases. Going to our own fire department, city manager's been quoted as saying, we're going to have as good, if not better. We're going to have better services than we currently have. We're going to do it better than Cal Fire, even though we respect Cal Fire and the great job they do. I do acknowledge that. However, I don't see how bringing in a consultant, hiring, and doing that, where are we going to train our people? That's something else that still hasn't been asked. We have a very complex community with ascending and descending hillside homes, as we saw on Gray Fox. We have water supply issues like we saw where I lost my motor home at the storage facility. Things happen, but how do we prevent it? That's called help. The auto and mutual aid that's discussed, they're still not there and we're hearing those contracts aren't going to go through and it's going to be assistance by hire at best, if it can even done. They can't even enter into agreements because the Canyon Lake Fire Department's not officially established yet. So I think there's a lot of false, I appreciate the chief's comments this evening, with answering some of that, but it looks great in a flyer and a public knowledge, but it doesn't answer the specific questions. There's nothing about retention, the money for training, the turnout, price difference and turnouts between reserves and full-time. There's different things that create issues or a lack of understanding that doesn't provide or equate to service to Canyon Lakers for our safety. Since I've come here, I've moved my in-laws, my mother, friends that I call family, coworkers, my aunt, my brother-in-law. There's nine or 10 homes that have come in of family because of the utility tax and thinking we have good first responder issues between police and fire. And I'm very concerned at the direction we're going. Is it a Canyon Lake Fire Department issue? Not if they have like-for-like staffing. I've spoken with Councilmember Smith. Originally, he was saying RSO was going to dispatch us. Now we've entered in an agreement at a cost. So there's a lot of unknowns that keep evolving and it was about saving money. It was complex tonight to hear, we're willing to spend more money for certain contracts and whatnot. So I think culturally, we're not looking at it holistically or long-term. We're looking at Band-Aids. It's going to hurt this community in the long run.
Thank you. Next, we have Tyler Murdaugh.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm officially new to the community and I moved here in February with my family.
Welcome.
These are all my brothers. We all work together, the majority of us. And looking, I moved here knowing what we have for service. They sold me on the lake. And one thing that concerns me, listening to the chief talk, and I know we talked about the two-in, two-out and we're going to, we're going to try and do 4-0 staffing with, possibly with a reserve. If that's not in place and we only have three and we don't officially have any contracts with mutual aid or auto aid, how long's that take? How long's it take for that second engine to get there to save our homes, to save my neighbor's home? I know it was a once-in-a-decade or once-in-two-decade fire that we had a couple of weeks ago with the storage unit, facility fire. If we didn't have the response of the 17-plus units that were there, we would have lost homes, people, residents. What's, what we're saving with going to our own fire department isn't worth a life. We should look at other avenues to make what we have work and move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple emails that I'd like to read into the record from Anthony Rodriguez. It says, "The city's idea to start a fire department has been poorly conceptualized from the beginning. First by paying wages that would, that would place public safety employees among the lowest in the county, it makes it unattractive to prospective employees. By making it unattractive to work here, when other surrounding departments could pay more, why would anyone stay with the fire department long-term? It would be a revolving door of people getting their foot in the door and leaving. When the benefit package is so poor, two weeks of sick and two weeks of vacation a year, a poor retirement formula and probably poor health benefits, how do we expect to attract and retain employees? The quality of service would go down. The leadership engineers, captains, and chiefs would be double-dippers, much like the current fire chief. Someone that is already drawing a pension trying to increase their income. A career in the fire service often leaves employees with chronic health problems. Is the city prepared to take on the medical liabilities of these experienced employees? The price of service would increase. Has the city considered the cost of having the liability of providing fire service squarely on its shoulders instead of the current contracting agencies? If an employee crashes the fire engine into a vehicle or structure, goes out on injury, forcing others to work overtime, or otherwise disrupts normal operations, the city's liability is 100% compared to what it is now. Has the city anticipated these unforeseen costs? An additional note regarding the storage fire at the RV Storage Yard. There is a rumor circulating in the community that the city employees claimed the storage fire would never have become as big as it did if Canyon Lake Fire Department was the responding agency. I believe that to be. I believe that to be fundamentally untrue and insults the efforts of our professional firefighters. I'd like to see Canyon Lake Fire Department's one engine, one pickup truck, and one chief contain that fire more successfully than the nearly two dozen pieces of equipment that responded to that fire." Excuse me. The city manager claims the cost of fire service is ballooning, but he is comparing apples to oranges. He has said in the past that the cost of service increased 70%. He compared current costs to when the station was closed. Of course, it costs more to have a fire station than have neighboring stations run your calls. The statistics are dishonest, and the new Fire Department will be founded on dishonesty. The real ballooning costs the city has seen are the costs of the office of the city manager. Approximately $750,000 a year for a few employees and office supplies, he has said. I didn't know office supplies cost $500,000 a year. The city manager's office has increased its costs at an alarming rate. Why do we need a city manager that makes nearly $200,000 for a city of 4,000 homes and four strip malls? Reserve firefighters are a pipe dream in today's world. Riverside County has trouble finding reserves that want to work in busy stations for experience. Canyon Lake and its two-to-one calls per day are hardly a place a reserve firefighter would want to work, especially for $50 a day. Good luck ever having two in, two out on a house fire if you're relying on reserves for your basic staffing needs." And that comment is from Anthony Rodriguez. And that concludes my public comments.
Okay. Anything from staff?
I'd like to commend the work the chief has been doing, just as a reminder of the timeline we've been on here. The council made the final decision to start a Fire Department in November of 2019 after months of study, feasibility analysis that was done, after struggling for many years with the rising costs of our contracts for police and fire, struggling with having no control at all over those costs, and facing an uncertain future for the city. We brought Chief Latendras on as of February 1st, and he has done a phenomenal job from then to now, and he has a lot of work still to do. We are, you know, when he came out on February 1st, he knew that the go-live date was to be January 1st, 2022, so he had 11 months to stand up a department. We're just four months into that 11 months. I want to keep that perspective because it's amazing what's been accomplished in those four months. But not every piece of the puzzle is in place yet. There are still a lot of things that are being worked on. Auto aid and mutual aid agreements are some of those things. Those are complicated discussions and negotiations. I guess what we've seen the last week or two is to be expected. It seems to be a kind of a coordinated union effort to undermine what we're trying to do here. If that's not what it is, and I'd like to speak to the people who spoke tonight, I want to thank you for being here, for raising these issues, because they are things that are being worked on, and perhaps we need to do a better job of communicating to the community where we are. There is a plan for an awful lot of community outreach when the time comes, when we have all of the, or almost all of the pieces of the puzzle in place, so that we can give an accurate picture to the community. I hope that you gentlemen are here tonight because, as residents of Canyon Lake, you want the best for your community, and you want to help this city get to that place. And if that's the case, then I offer, I've written down your names, I know who took the time to be here tonight, which I appreciate. I would love to sit down with you. I'd love to invite our Fire Chief to do the same thing, and let's sit around and talk about what our plans are, how maybe we can make it better. If the goal is simply to change the city's mind, that time has come and gone. We are too pregnant with this thing. That decision was made after months and months and months of study back in November of 2019. Engines have been ordered, equipment is being ordered, we have a chief onboard. That decision's been made. But crafting the best model for this community is an ongoing process, and something that we are very open to discussing and would welcome your input on. And so my message back to you is, thank you. We want input. We want the partnership. If it's truly a constructive discussion and coming from a place of wanting to help us do the best we can with the job, I welcome that. I'll offer that. So we have, Renan will be reaching out to set something up, and that's all I have on that tonight.
All right. City manager comments?
Only one comment. We got a message not too long ago from Jenny Aaron-Cranz, who asked us to pass along an invitation to everyone in the community to Jordan's Celebration of Life, which will be the 19th of this month, Saturday, the 19th, at 10 o'clock AM at the lodge, and everyone is welcome. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. So we'll go to councilmember comments. Remember, this is a three-minute, three-minute invitation on all of us as well. Larry?
Just, this is going to be real quick. My committees did not be, because they'll be next week, so as far as RCA and the others that I'm involved with, I'll have a report next time around. But to address a couple of things on our department, and I'm going to make it quick. Before we even hired a consultant, even after we hired the consultant, some of you know who the consultant is, CI, there's them and others, Citygate.
We did some feasibility. We also did major discussions with key players on both sides of the aisle, meaning at the county level, at the county CEO level, and everyone in this of our proposal and what we would do as a cooperative agreement, and what we could work together on. And so we did not go into this blindly. We had those discussions. Yes, it's taken time to ink the agreements, such as the auto aid, which is key to our success. Staffing, I understand when you guys talk about staffing. I know what that is, and I know the shortcomings when you're understaffed, and the limitations when you have that. I by no means want to put any of our personnel or any of our citizens in harm's way. So some of those questions that you've asked, unfortunately, we haven't been able to answer on a timely manner for a couple of reasons. One of it, COVID. Two, we haven't had our public forums like we wanted to, to give you an update. Since the chief's been here, we've tried to do it on a monthly basis and to cover the key points at that point. I understand exactly what you're saying. I understand the point of view you're coming from. We've taken those into considerations, and trust me, we are trying to make the best department we can, taking into considerations that we do have calls, and we do have multiple calls, and we do have that once-in-awhile storage fire. We do not want an unsafe community, and we do not want our citizens to be without the service levels that they've had. Our goal at this council, from my perspective, is to try to be equal or better. Understand what you're talking on staff. Give us some time. The city manager will outreach to you and have a meeting, and we've got meetings this month, jammed meetings on this very specific topic, both with the Fire Chief, both with county CEO. So we do have things in the hopper, specific to everything what you guys talked about tonight. So from my perspective, I put, we've put a lot into this. We've tried to take everything, anything into consideration, and I appreciate the efforts, the comments, because we feel the same. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Dale?
I attended one meeting this week that had to do with the lejua. Primarily had to do with the water quality of Lake Elsinore and its impaired water body. We talked a lot about that because Elsinore's in far worse shape than Canyon Lake. They ran some models out about how it should go in the future. One of the main issues they're coming across is that there's a expectation by the state that when a property drains, that it retains its water and it grows down into the groundwater. Well, as a result of that, they feel like there's not going to be enough water going through Canyon Lake and Elsinore Lake to keep the water quality of those lakes at a reasonable standard. So I believe that they're going to go and go to the state and say, "You need to let these properties drain some of their water off their land and let it flow through our lakes so that our lakes can stay healthy." That's going to be a change and a lot of work, but the data seems to support that there needs to be some balance between keeping all the water retained on an individual lot and driven down for groundwater, and the ability to have it did the water flow like it always has, done over many generations. So that's basically what lejua was doing, and that was my meeting. It's been a long day today, you know. We're missing Jordan. It's hard to sit in a room with three people and wonder where the other two are, even though Jeremy was on the phone. It just feels empty. And again, we lost a great man, so that's all I have for today.
Jeremy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a long night. I'll make it quick. You know, difficult night, very difficult night for us all. RCTC, as some of you have seen, Interstate 15 and 91 were in construction. It's a $270 million investment that RCTC has worked with Caltrans to streamline some of the fast-track programs. I also met with RTA, Riverside Transportation Agency, and in regards to bus services for our students, will happen again this summer for our students to go to the beach. So they're looking at new routes that are going to be opening up due to COVID. As you know, June 14th, COVID-19's real. June 15th, it's not. There won't be a mask mandate, so we'll be changing our regional approach to some of our public entities. I want to end with echoing what Larry stated. There's so many things happening behind the scenes, and Larry and I have met, and we want, and we're trying to make sure that we get out to the community the importance of what we're trying to do in Canyon Lake in regards to our Fire Department. COVID has been a big part of that, but Larry and I want to work with staff, with the men and women that are there tonight, to develop the best program we possibly can for Canyon Lake, and that's our entire method of everything that we're doing. So please work with us, not against us. We think that we have a great opportunity here, and there's so much that is being done, and we need each and every one of you. We need Canyon Lakers to step up like you have tonight. Appreciate you being there, and thank you for the time, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. First, I would like to say thank you to everyone who came to this memorial meeting in honor of Jordan. It was nice to see the sea of Hawaiian shirts out there. And for a City Council meeting, we actually had people in the audience, even though we weren't, you know, previously had been able to, and just no one comes, so it was nice to actually see people. And I apologize to any of those people who had to rotate in based on capacity restrictions for COVID, but I do know that on behalf of Jenny Aaron-Cranz, it was much appreciated. I haven't had any meetings this month. I want to thank city staff and the members of the community for coming to our Memorial Day event. It was well-attended. I think maybe even better attendance than some of our neighbors on their events, just by virtue of our city really wanting to participate in recognition of the importance of our military and those who have fallen, so I appreciate that very much, and my gratitude extends to every citizen. You know, to those who have made comments on the Fire Department today, I appreciate you being here. It's nice to see you. I've received all your emails. I've received your text messages. I've received your Facebook messages, and I appreciate them. I am an individual on a council of five, and I am not a Fire Department expert, although I do deal with unions on a regular basis. If I was making decisions specifically based on staffing or what have you, you all would be in a world of hurt. That's why we've hired experts. So if I don't respond with answers to your question, it's because I have to go get them. A lot of those answers coming back to me are, "It's in progress. We have a meeting tomorrow. We have a plan in place. We'll give you an update at the Finance Committee," et cetera. So the information is coming. It's not as fast as you'd want. I understand that. So like the city manager said, that will be a priority, just to make sure that you have constant updates. But I would like to echo his request to you. It's one that I've already made to some of you. We would love your input. We would love your help. We are moving forward on this. This was a decision made because costs have increased. We don't want to change the level of service, but we are stuck with the prices as they are. This is a unique opportunity at this juncture with this council to move forward with our own department in light of the budgetary impact of COVID. I mean, if nothing else, we got some grace, and we're taking advantage of that. I've had many conversations with multiple constituents about, "Well, we could keep CAL Fire if we paid more taxes and the like." But that's a handful of people, and the other people are adamantly opposed to that. So we're doing the best with the information we have and trying to serve an entire community. And so with that, again, I would echo the request of the city manager and of all the staff, that if you can help us, we would love this to be a community-wide effort. The next council meeting will be Wednesday, July 7th, at 5:00 PM for closed session and 6:30 for open session. I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Councilman Jordan Aaron-Cranz at 9:44.